Yes, sir.
Turn your microphones off.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're ready now. We want to thank everybody who joined us today on our work session, March 3rd. And I'd like to ask everyone to keep their phones on silent as we proceed to our meeting. Mr. Slade is going to have an invitation to get started.
Let's pray. Lord, we pause at this time, as we always do, Lord, to invoke your time and your blessing and your presence and your power to us, Lord. We ask for your discernment and your wisdom to be visited upon this body. I pray, Father, that you will help us all to understand the responsibilities that we have for all of the citizens of this county. Father, it's one of the privileges to serve the people of Rankin County, and I pray, Father, that you would help us to do so in a way that is not only fitting of the people, Lord, but also is in keeping with your will. Father, we pray for those who are protecting us even at this time. I pray, Father, for their safety and their safe return. I pray all of these things in Christ's name.
Amen. Okay, rather than messing it up like I did the first time, this time I'm going to call our planning commission meeting order and start with our first item of business to consider approval of minutes.
I move.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any consideration or any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it. Old Business?
The first item under Old Business is a conditional use permit at 1449 Old Fannin Road for Kendrick Gordon. We're just going to be reviewing hearings that are scheduled for Monday, the 7th. The property is located on the west side of Old Fannin, just north of Waterdance Apartments. Mr. Gordon's seeking the conditional use permit to operate a mobile food truck. He plans to park the truck on a vacant lot owned by Michael Nowell, who has given him permission to park on the property. It's a .52 acre parcel. It's Zone C2. This is an aerial view of that property. This is just a picture of the actual property. This is a view of the food truck. And then this is his site plan. He shows where he'll be parking the truck and also where customers will park and the entrance and exit there onto Old Fannin Road. His proposed hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The property was posted and the notice of the hearing was published in the paper. We've received no calls and opposition. These are surrounding properties. And this is across from the vacant lot, and it's in the city limits of Flowood.
I know we're going to table this because the gentleman attorney's not here, but there is something I need to get cleared up because I spoke with someone at the Health Department that said that mobile, these moving vans, these curbside vehicles can only stay located 30 days at a time, so that's something we definitely need to address. I don't know who it is that's doing this, but when it gets timed, that could be a major factor whether it gets approved or not.
You say, I'm sorry.
Just FYI, there have been a number of attempts to reach out to the Health Department, and we are seeking some sort of written confirmation about their regulations from them because we've gotten different answers depending on who they've spoken to.
So you're saying 30 days? His health permit's only good for every 30 days?
No, no, they said that these mobile trucks can only stay in one location for 30 days at a time.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Does that mean they can leave before they're due?
No, I asked, I asked, they said that wasn't the case. I said, well, they can just leave five feet and, you know, move right down the road. And they're like, no, it's not the way it's designed. But like I said, they're going to get more definite information for us.
We need something in writing so that we can act upon their interpretation of their own regulations. We don't enforce those regulations, they do, but we need them to tell us what those regulations, how those regulations can be enforced. I see no reason for us to permit a use that extends beyond 30 days if they're going to come in and move them out.
Yeah.
So we need, we need something official from them.
But that's actually scheduled for Monday. We're just reviewing today, so.
Well, actually, Monday, we're not going to take it on Monday either, right? We're going to table it Monday.
After this board approved the initiation process to start down this road towards public hearing, we were contacted by Mr. Ward's attorney, and he asked, said he had a conflict on the March 7th date, and asked for that date to be continued. Well, the process didn't allow us to do that inulaterally, so we may have people who show up on the 7th to participate in that hearing. We need to open the hearing and give them an opportunity to speak if they wish to, and then the board can decide whether to continue it. And I would suggest we probably want to do that so the man can have his lawyer here.
Is this totally cooked foods or is it?
No.
Or neither?
I think he cooks on the truck.
I think, are you asking totally, does this apply to totally cooked or people selling shrimp or whatever?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's totally cooked.
But does it apply to the, a man will sell shrimp from?
We'll take this up tomorrow. What day is it, May 3rd?
March 7th.
I'm sure that's the right question, yeah.
Okay, okay.
All right. Next item.
The second item is a rezoning request by Countryside Subdivision. Countryside is located off of North Shore Parkway. Property owners in Countryside Subdivision are seeking to rezone the subdivision from RE1 to RE1 RCD for inclusion in the Reservoir Community Overlay District. The property, there is actually 41 lots in that Countryside subdivision. A petition signed by 26 property owners was included within, was included in the application. This is just an aerial view. Property to the east in that red box labeled Palo Verde, that is not included in this rezoning. The property was posted and the notice was published in the paper for the hearing. We've received numerous calls, mainly just inquiring as to what was being asked, and only two people were in opposition to the rezoning. Okay, the next item is a conditional use permit for Spencer Sykes, Sykes Enterprises. It's a conditional use permit on Stoll Road. The property's located on the north side of Stoll Road. It's a 2.30 acre parcel that's Zone C2. He's seeking the conditional use permit to park heavy construction equipment on the property. He says it would be parked there when it's not being used on his job sites, and they're anticipating parking a couple of dump trucks and a tractor from time to time. They're proposing a parking lot of fine slag. That's just an aerial view of the property. And this is the actual property. This is a view looking back toward Highway 25 on Stoll Road. And then these are surrounding properties. We did post the property and publish the notice in the paper. We received one call in opposition due to the condition of the road.
Condition of the road traveling, traveling in, is that what you're saying?
He thinks that the county needs to fix the road.
Yep.
Okay.
Motion. Condition Stoll Road, I guess was the issue.
Yeah. It wasn't.
We need to make a motion at the public hearing?
No, sir, that's a review.
Oh.
Review.
Never mind.
I'm sorry.
All right.
Okay, the first item under New Considerations is a conditional use permit for Roy Anderson at 194 Bragg Street. The property is located on the north side of Bragg Street, and Mr. Anderson is requesting to place a 2016 28 by 48 manufactured home on the property. It's a 2.40 acre parcel that's zoned R1B. At present, there is one other home on this property. This will be the second dwelling if it's approved. This is his site plan. That other home is on this side of the property, and this is where he's proposing to place the mobile home. This is a view of that property. He's already got his pad there. And then these are surrounding properties. Mr. Anderson is here today if you have any questions.
Motion at the public hearing?
Motion by Daniel Settle. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
All right, the next item is a conditional use permit for Dana Campbell at 1286 Starr Road. The property is located on the west side of Starr Road. Mrs. Campbell is seeking the conditional use permit to place a 2016 16 by 72 manufactured home on property. This is family land. It's a 30 acre parcel of land that's zoned RE1. The home will be for Mrs. Campbell's son, and this will be the second dwelling on that 30 acre parcel. This is the aerial view of the property. The red box is the approximate location of the manufactured home. This is the site plan. You can see the existing home, and the placement of the trailer will be back behind the existing home. I don't think it will be visible from Starr Road. And these, this is the existing home that's already on that piece of property, and these are surrounding properties. Mr. Ross Campbell is here today if you have any questions.
I make a motion at the public hearing.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, set at the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Next is a rezoning request for Macintosh Farms on Andrew Chapel Road. The property is located on the west side of Andrew Chapel Road. It's 109.26 acres that's zoned R1. They're seeking to change to RE1. They have plans to subdivide the tract into four mini farm type parcels where potential buyers have an option to keep horses on the property. Grazing livestock is not allowed in the R1 district. That's just an aerial view. It's a wooded property. This is a copy of the zoning map. The parcel is outlined in red. It shows the R1 zoning. Property to the east, the south, and the west is all zoned RE1 now. And this is their site plan showing those four lots. The acreage, the maximum amount is 40 acres, and then the smallest lot is eight acres. They all have frontage on Andrew Chapel Road. This is a view of that property. And then these are surrounding properties. They're also planning on placing restrictive covenants on that property. One would be that there would be no further subdividing of the four proposed mini farm tracts. They're going to require a 2250 square foot minimum for houses to be constructed, and then they're prohibiting manufactured homes. Mr. Matt, the Macintosh Brothers are here, and Bob Lacoste, the realtor, are here if you have any questions.
I move, set it.
Second. Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Cross, set the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Next is a conditional use permit for Katie McKinnon at 1026A Greenfield Circle. The property is located on the east side of Greenfield Circle. It's a 6.89 acre parcel of family land that's zoned RE1A. She's requesting to place a manufactured home on the property. She wants to make sure she's approved before she purchases a home. This will be the second dwelling on that property. There's an existing home on it now. This is the area where she plans to place the mobile home. There has been a home in this location in years past. This is the existing home on that property. And then these are surrounding properties.
I move, we set the public hearing.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Morrow, set the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
All right, the last item under New Considerations is a conditional use permit at 252 Clover Valley Boulevard for Clifton Rogers Jr. The property is located on the east side of Clover Valley Boulevard. Mr. Rogers is seeking the conditional use permit for the Five Star Lodge. It's an events venue that's operating at 252 Clover Valley Boulevard. Their application states that the lodge, pavilion, and cabin A are used for weddings, family reunions, church retreats, and retirement functions. It's a 250 acre tract of land zoned RE1. That's just an aerial view of the property. And this is the site plan. It shows the lodge, and then it shows the pavilion and cabin A that she says is used for weddings, family reunions, church retreats, and retirement functions. And then cabin B and the shop building are used for hunting camp members only. This is a view of the front of the Five Star Lodge. This is a view from the side and rear. These are pictures of the lodge.
All right, okay. I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention. What I need to do now?
Okay, and then this is a view looking down at the pavilion and the cabins that are on the property, cabin A and cabin B. This is the shop building that is used for hunting camp members only.
What was that? Is that a limo?
Yes, sir.
That's a hunting vehicle.
What are these pictures?
These are of the property at 252 Clover Valley Boulevard.
Is this, is this the same property? We've had some discussion about the needs cleanup. Is this some?
Looks like he's been busy.
Yes, sir. You know, Mr. Rogers has another property with pending violations as well.
Okay, I didn't know if it was the same, okay.
No, sir. So this is a view of that property at 252 Clover Valley.
Oh, there it is, okay. Do you have a picture of that lodge?
Yes, sir, you missed it.
She showed it.
The hunting camp?
Yeah, you missed that one.
Oh, well.
That one right there, yeah.
Yeah, this is cabin A, and that's cabin B that's used for hunting members. And then this is the lodge itself.
Yeah.
This request is asking us to sit for this lodge, and we're trying to?
It's asking for approval, a conditional use, to approve the operation of that business there. Conditional uses are looked at on a site-by-site basis to see if it's compatible with the neighborhood, and so that's what he's asking for, is just to get that approval for that use.
Have we had, I mean, did we have, give approval when, to build all this? Have they had permits to build all that's out there now?
No, sir, we haven't had any building permits issued for the lodge.
It's a lot of buildings out there.
Yes, sir.
It is?
What about fire codes? If there's no permits, how do we know about safety and things like that?
We don't, because we haven't.
Had an opportunity to inspect them.
No, sir.
We've never inspected them? Would you get an aerial view?
Such as, for starters?
I mean, have you looked, I mean, so you actually?
I haven't.
But I mean, yeah, yeah.
They haven't measured it, but, you know. I think for starters, our staff needs to go in and evaluate each property to see if it meets code, and if it doesn't meet code, it needs to be brought up to code. And I know in the past, the buildings, ones, things of this nature, we've always doubled the fee for people who went and decided to build, you know, construct buildings on their own without getting approval first. Of course, we do have the right to make them turn them down, too.
That's one question I've got for making them build it up to code. I mean, if we decide not to grant this conditional use permit, are we still bound to make them bring it up to code even though they didn't get a building permit? If he continues to keep it as a hunting lodge and does not open it up to the public, is he still bound, are we still compelling him to?
I don't know that the county has necessarily, necessarily has an interest just with respect to the code enforcement side of it, although it could. The fact that it's not permitted by conditional use means it's not an approved use of the property and needs to be brought into compliance. I think we want to force that issue before you get into the code.
I do, too. That's why I'm saying, there's no sense in making him spend a whole bunch of money on stuff that if we at the end of the day say no, we're not going to do it.
That's correct.
I would say that we address the conditional use first and then make those conditions, lay out the conditions.
We really have, we really have two different situations here, though, because we also, I don't know if you call it just illegal dump site or just outright nuisance one that we have to address, so.
I don't think it's so much this one, I think it's the other ones up there he's got.
Well, there's obviously been some here as well, but also another questionable thing is this shop building and if it's being used for the tree service business.
Well, there's another thing, isn't this, would this be a potential business, too?
It is.
I mean, business as far as the hunting lodge and all that, wouldn't that be a?
Well, that's what they're asking for.
That's what they're asking is for conditional use to operate that.
But I mean, has a permit and all that?
That's correct.
Yeah, right.
But it's all residential right now, so it's not, the businesses aren't allowed.
Right, okay.
But then there is a question about the tree service business operating on the property as well. That's a different business.
You must make sure that that's clear in your minds. You've got a five-star lodge operating as a business, and you've got a tree service operating as a business, two separate business operations within a residential zone.
But in the, 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 in
What, where we are at this point Jay is, we, we do have at least some level of compliance with respect to the repair, but that doesn't mean that the board doesn't have the ability to determine whether or not the repair has been affected to its satisfaction. That's where kind of the gray area is, so if the board is still of the opinion that this repair has not solved all of the issues in the mind of the board with respect to aesthetics and other issues that we can address, then you can certainly take that up. But he is no longer, he no longer has an issue with respect to the dilapidated condition of the fence as it existed on that day, he has repaired it. Now, we can talk about whether or not it's been repaired effectively, appropriately.
Personally, I, you know, it looks to me like it's propped up, it's not really repaired, it's patched and it's like it's barely standing. So, I would personally like to see it repaired in a manner that all that old stuff taken out and new stuff put in. But, you know, that's, uh.
How about we hear from the owner?
He has to say, is, is the owner here?
Yeah.
Yeah, wouldn't mind hearing his version of it.
If you will, please. If you will, please state your name and address so we get on.
Chuck Nolan, fifty-three Fairwood Lane.
Yes, sir.
That was done temporarily, we stopped on it because we were told we needed to come here. So before I finished up and spent more money to repair it and then going to have to tear it down, we left it like it is. Those are going to be taken down and the fence is sturdy. I wouldn't have this fence problem if it weren't for the trees that had grown up along the ditch that you made me cut that weren't on my property. So, in all actuality, it's the neighbors' trees banging against the fence that I didn't own to start with. The home builders built that fence with my permission, with my permission that they would take care of the fence from here on. Well, those two died and the neighborhood doesn't want to take care of the fence, well, the neighborhood's not even taking care of the fence at the entry of their property. It's falling down, so.
So they put the fence on your property?
They put the fence on my property because they chose to build homes around a mini stores and they didn't want my tenants looking down onto their, they were having problems selling the homes.
Right.
So they came to me and said, will you allow us to build this fence? And I said, A, build a good fence, they didn't build a good fence. B, you or the neighborhood one will be responsible for this fence, you know, because I don't need it, I don't want it. I had a cyclone fence up there, all I needed at the time, because when I built, there were no homes there, I had a cyclone fence there to avoid anybody from stepping off that edge, that's all I needed. I let them build the fence trying to be a good neighbor and it's bitten me in the ass.
Yeah.
And I regret doing it and I, I see now that you can't help your neighbor any longer.
So now the fence becomes your responsibility?
Now the fence becomes my responsibility.
On your property?
Trees became my responsibility because they were hanging over my property, you know? I had two options, either pay to have the trees removed or fight y'all in court. I've got a letter here from you telling me to remove the trees. There's another letter also that you sent. So, you know, pay me for removing the trees, I built the fence, you know? They, I understand they want me to remove the stumps, the stumps are not on my property. We will have a fight if I'm made to go and remove the stumps. At some point in time, you got to stand for what's right and don't worry about the money.
Well, we didn't say anything about the stumps, we were just trying to address the dilapidated fence.
I understand.
Who told you move the stumps?
Are you planning on?
Hadn't nobody told me to remove the stumps yet, but I'd heard that they had been calling about the stumps. The lady that started the whole argument about the trees didn't even live behind my property. Her yard that was flooding is behind my neighbor's property. And when I went in and cut all the trees, she came and called, started coming, hey, you didn't get the tree off my property. Well, wait a minute, she said the trees weren't on your property to start with, now you're saying I didn't get trees off your property, well, it wasn't behind my property, so I didn't, I didn't cut. And she still had the same drainage issue that she had before I cut all these other trees.
Just out of curiosity, how is all that not all grown up and just full of weeds and snakes and everything?
I cut it down.
So you keep it maintained now?
No, I'm not keeping it maintained, that's their property.
I'm asking.
I cleared it out.
He cleared it, it's not now.
Okay, you recently did, you used.
Yes.
When he cut the trees.
I recently did it, that's their property. There used to be a cyclone fence right there budding up to the retainer wall that each one of these homeowners has a gate in their fence that allows them access to that ditch. To allow them access to cut the trees, cut the weeds, clean it out. As Mr. Slade said, it's not a county issue, it's not my issue, I've got a drain there to take all the water off my property, but the willow trees that were growing up and banging against my fence every time you got a windstorm that caused, well, their fence. That's what caused the fence to, to become like it is now. Now those trees are gone, when the trees were there, there was never an issue with fence because they had the, the view blocked. The fence only became an issue after I cut the trees.
I'm a little confused really why he had to cut the trees if they weren't on his property.
That, that must be clear about something, one fact that.
No, I'm, I'm, you don't have to show me the letter, I'm just, I'm just asking a question.
The, the one fact that we know for certain is that it is private property, that's the one, one hundred percent absolute competent fact that we can establish here. So it belongs either to the subdivision development or the HOA of the subdivision development or Mr. Nolan.
Doesn't belong to me.
And therein is the issue, it belongs to.
Someone.
One or more of those that I just described. With it being private property, as you know, you guys are prohibited from making the action to address conditions on private property unless there's a very narrow finding that the board can make and it's simply not applicable here.
Well, what I, okay, wouldn't each property, if it's private property it comes up, and wouldn't each landowner that joins that, that be his responsibility then?
It's uncertain.
Okay.
At some point here it's going to have to be determined in order to address this issue, but that's simply not, this is not the forum to determine rights and ownership in this property.
Right, but I mean, that's, that's where we are, but, but we do know unfortunately for you, uh, as you put it, their fence is built on your property, you allowed it and then they're going to have, and now you have to maintain it.
After their trees tore down.
Right, but I'm just saying, that's a hindsight issue.
It's a hindsight issue, I agree, like I say, there won't be helping, helping the neighbor anymore and I'm waiting for the trees to grow back.
But I won't let anybody build a fence on my property either if I know I'm going to have to maintain it either.
Well, we also, you know, our ordinance require whenever you have a, a commercial area, that there's a buffer zone between that and residential area, so there was going to need to be something there anyway.
But how, when did that, I guess, when that ordinance come about? To comply that, yeah, that's.
That was zoned commercial.
I understand, but they, they built residential beside you.
Right.
So there was going to need to be a buffer zone put up between the two.
No, what I'm asking though Jay, was, who was there first?
The building.
The storage facility.
Yeah.
You were there first?
Right.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, during that time though, why would he be the one to have to give up a buffer or put a buffer up if they, if, when they?
Why they made the deal they did, the developer, he made a deal, the developer, not the homeowners, the developer team in and put the fence up on his property.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
And that, that's how the buffer got there. The developer long gone, now we're left with homeowners who have a fence that is falling down.
You don't have anything in writing says they'll maintain it, yeah.
They're dead anyway.
Yeah.
What, what?
Hindsight.
What do you suggest, Mr. Rogers? I'm, I'm sorry, Nolan, I'm sorry, Mr. Nolan.
What do I suggest?
No.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna repair the fence, like I say, this was done as a temporary to get everything stabilized, I was told I was going to have to come here, so why continue trying to stabilize it?
Well, let's just save time, you repair the fence and you've met the requirements that we've asked and in the future I'll try to work with you, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I do too, very much.
If you agree to repair the fence and. Well, we, we understand.
I agree to repair the fence, that's not the issue, like I say, why spend money repairing the fence? I'd already done some, but when I was told I was going to have to come here, well, I, I'd be an idiot to sit here and just keep throwing money at it and then come in here and you got to put up a new fence.
Yeah, I, I understand.
You told me though Chuck, if your intention, two, three years down the road, you're going to have to put a new fence up.
Somewhere down the road, I'm going to have to put up a fence.
But that fence looks pretty used up.
Well, I mean, he understands that.
It's less than ten years old.
And if I understand.
And I, I can ride all around Rockland County and find you plenty of used up fences just like it in worse shape, you know?
We don't need to start that.
I'll be glad to.
We don't need to start.
I got plenty of time, if you can see I'm here because I got plenty of time.
Fence patrol.
You want to make a motion for it?
No, I don't, no I don't.
I understand your situation and I do sympathize with you, but I do understand why you patched it up and I.
Our, our building department asked you to repair the fence rather than replace it and since we did that, that's kind of on us, so, but I'm asking you to repair it in a manner that's appropriate.
I will.
So that when someone's looking from the backside of it, they're not ashamed of it, so that's all I ask.
Well, unless there's a condition for paint, what color I can paint my fence, if I put up a new fence, they will have something to be proud of.
All right, thank you.
You know?
All right.
So, and as far as I know, there's not a condition of what color I can paint.
I hope you're not talking about pink.
I'm a lime green kind of guy.
Let's put some black rainbows and things on.
Just lime green.
Okay, I think, I think we.
We appreciate you taking time to come in, see us today and address this matter, very much so.
Sorry, it's been a break.
And with that, we'll close that public hearing. We will note for the record that Mr. Nolan has, quote, voluntarily agreed, close quote, to repair the fence.
In an appropriate.
In an appropriate manner, okay? Next item, uh, Ms. President, uh, for nuisance consideration is the Beverly Blaine nuisance hearing eight eight three Monterey Road District One property, this time we'll open that hearing and I'll ask Renee to get the photos for us.
All right, um, we've received several complaints in December about, um, logs and wood waste being brought in on this property and, uh, burning of the, uh, waste. These pictures were taken, well, we received a complaint before December because these pictures were taken November sixteenth. We sent the certified letter, uh, the first letter was, uh, returned unclaimed. The hearing notice was received, but we've not heard or had any contact from the property owner. These are new pictures that were taken, uh, yesterday.
This time we'll ask, is Ms. Blaine or anyone on behalf of Ms. Blaine here today? I, I don't see anyone here on behalf of the property owner, so we'll close that public hearing, at this time it'd be appropriate for you guys to consider further action on it. You have an opportunity to go ahead and declare the nuisance now referred up to justice court?
I declared a nuisance and I'm a, I've been notified several times, there's been continual burning there, it's not, it's, it's a little more dense there than you're showing in the picture as far as people that live around there. Uh, and I've had numerous calls of, and they've even talked to them about the burning and, um, so, no, I declare a nuisance, I, I just want to see it cleaned up and don't want any more burning.
Sir.
I have a motion by Mr. Morrow and second by Mr. Morrow to declare this a nuisance to send to justice court, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right, next we have slight plan review.
Actually, we've got three more nuisances here to go, sir.
Three more.
All right.
Read the list.
I just turned the page, sorry.
The next item, uh, Ms. President, is the Timothy Hall nuisance consideration, one twenty Rankin Roads, District Four parcel, this time we'll open that public hearing, I'll ask Renee to show us the pictures.
All right, uh, we've received, uh, several complaints on this property and this is not the first time that Mr. Hall has been before you, uh, we had complaints in twenty eleven and twenty fourteen. This is a view of the condition of the property in October. Uh, neither of the letters were received, but, um, unfortunately, um, there was a house fire on the property, um, sometime in December and Mr. Hall came by the office, so we gave him a copy of the notice to come to the hearing today. These pictures were taken March the second.
I suppose the nuisance is not considering the house right yet, the nuisance is the other.
No, sir, it was the rubbish and debris and the inoperable vehicles, um.
When did the house burn?
I think it was sometime in December.
Oh, this is fairly recent.
This, I mean, last December fifteenth.
Is Mr. Hall here or anyone on behalf of Mr. Hall? Step forward please. No, okay, he's supposed to be here, but he didn't show up, okay.
Lucky you, huh?
I'm stuck.
My, my name's Tim Breiley, I am at one oh seven Summer Ridge Drive in Pearl, Mississippi, which is also in Rankin County. And I am a member of a benevolence committee at Crossgate Baptist Church and I got involved in this situation about two weeks ago. The house burned on January thirty-first, have a copy of the fire report if anybody needs it. Uh, I'd like some time to evaluate the situation and see if, that we can provide assistance and, uh, that's why I'm here today.
Toward the house or the?
The whole, the whole situation. There's a lot more going on than just this issue and, uh, so, and I, I have to have time to get, you know, to really find out what all the circumstances are.
How much time?
Say thirty days?
So what if we do like we normally do?
Typically what we have done is allow, where you have a situation like this where, uh, an, an individual is, uh, indicating a desire to get it straightened out, uh, we oftentimes will allow them time to do that. And so that's a good faith effort, so it would be appropriate to simply continue this hearing for a period of at least thirty days, allow Renee and John to continue to monitor the situation, work with the church and or the property owner, uh, and then revisit the issue, say in a, in a thirty day period, whatever the hearing date works out to be for the next scheduled nuisance hearing.
Sir, would you extend our sincerity about, I'm, I'm not addressing the house right here, about the other, so that we, thirty days?
That's what got us involved in it, was the fire.
Well. But we are serious.
Well, I, it's obvious.
Okay.
Would you do that and would you make that?
I will make that motion, thirty days.
I have a motion by Mr. Gaines to, uh, table this for thirty days, second by Mr. Morrow, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Ayes have it.
We'll head you in a card so we stay in contact quickly, tell you about how to, how to address this.
Give him one of yours, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll close that public hearing if it wasn't already closed. Next item, Ms. President, is the Kenneth Wells nuisance hearing, is it plus Wells or Kenneth?
Both.
Both, okay, I, I see what we're doing here now, okay, I'm sorry, uh, we'll, we'll start with the Kenneth, Kenneth Wells, two four one eight South Pearson Road, it's District One property, we'll open that public hearing, Renee if you will, demonstrate.
All right, um, this is, um, someone who's been before you multiple times as well, uh, this is, these pictures were taken in November. Uh, the certified mail, the hearing letter was received and these pictures were taken, um, March yesterday. Send it to the pictures.
Good.
I know for a time that once we have a hearing on these and they've been sent to justice court, that there's a period where it stays at justice court, it doesn't have to go back all through this again, has that time elapsed?
Yes, sir, uh, they usually remand it for a year and, uh, it has.
Okay.
At this time I would ask.
He's here, or was?
Yes, sir, he'll step forward, Ms. Wells is, is here. Ms. Wells, you live at twenty-four eighteen South Pearson Road, San Francisco.
Good morning. Good morning. Uh, do you have something you'd like to tell us?
I started cleaning up and, uh, I'm, 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 I'm going to get it cleaned up.
You're going to clean it up? Well, okay, we've, we've been down the same road before, and you get started cleaning up, and you do, start making a good, I guess, good start, and then it stops, and you start hauling stuff back in here. And you gotta understand, you live right in a main pathway on Pearson Road, that everybody travels, so you're in the center of sight. And you're gonna have to get, clean it up, and get it cleaned up, and keep it cleaned up. And you're not the only person, don't think anybody's singling you out, but at this time, we're gonna, I mean, you've got to, there's, there's really no gray area here, you've gotta get it cleaned up, and not pile it back up again. So I'm sorry, but that's the way we're gonna have to do it. Okay? Alright, thank you.
What we can do, Mr. Morrison, is simply a motion to go ahead and declare the nuisance.
Right.
As you know, it does take some period of time for it to move through the Justice Court process.
Right.
My suggestion would be that we'll go ahead and let Renee in, in her office, proceed with the Justice Court side, and see where that gets us.
Yeah.
So that's, that would be my recommendation on the motion.
Yeah, that's, that's the way I wanted to look at it, 'cause I know it gives them that time, but, um, the, I'm gonna go and declare the nuisance, and move it to, turn it over to Justice.
Justice Court, okay. Alright, that's the motion.
Oh, it's my turn. Alright, we have a motion to declare the nuisance into carry to Justice Court, by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Morris, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
If I fail to close that public hearing, it's now closed. We'll open the hearing now on the Plus Wells Nuisance Consideration, 2412 South Pearson Road, also District 1.
Next door.
Sorry, mine were out of order, Justice.
I don't believe he's here.
Yeah, is, is Mr. Wells, or anyone on behalf of Ms. Wells, President? I don't see anyone here, we'll close that public hearing.
We'll do it the same way.
Yes, sir.
That's the only way we got them cleaned up last time.
Right.
But the same, continue to clean it up, do it right again.
Motion by Mr. Morris to declare the nuisance and carry it to Justice Court.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next meeting is March 31st. Do we have a adjourn, recess?
May I say one last thing, please?
Sure.
Um, I would like to place adoption of the 2012 International Building Codes on the April 4th agenda, and I wanted to see if that would be okay with y'all, or if you had any questions for us about the new codes? That's something we need to do, is move into the 2012.
Well, I would suggest the 12th, you explain to us what the differences are.
So we know what is.
Okay, alright.
And also, I know that we're working toward getting all of our inspectors their license as they go do the test.
We are working toward getting some of them to take the test and get certified. John Gaskins is studying now to take the test, and he plans to take it, I think, this month or in April, one of the tests. And Joel Sims already has a certification as a residential building inspector.
Is there, is there certification through ICC, is that who's through?
It is.
And just to give you a heads up, I've been speaking to some of the new supervisors, they're ready to kinda ramp up our, our website, so we start putting more things out there. And one of the things was notifications of public hearings, so we're gonna start, that's one thing that was on the list for us to do. Of course, we've been wanting to put our ordinances out there, but we may need to have to hire an outside firm to do that first, to, to make that happen, so. But, for sure, I think it'd be a good idea, something we could do now, is the ordinances. So, I have a motion to recess till the 31st of March.
Some move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Ms. Cross. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Is Johnny Jones gonna run?
No, but I wish he was.
I would like to go see if that window's leaking in Ms. Portonberry's office, is he the building guy?
We got it. Right arm of your...
Yeah. Thank you, man, I'm enjoying it. Not crucifying. Okay, we're gonna call our regular, uh, agenda back in order for our Board of Supervisors' work session, and the first item of business is to have public comments, we have several people signed up. First one with VDCI, Chris New.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name's Chris with Vector Disease Control, and Brian Grantham asked me to come here this morning and talk a little bit about Zika virus, a virus that's transmitted by mosquitoes, and it's been in the news almost every day for the past couple of months. Uh, just a little history on it, it's been around since the 40s, it was originally found in Uganda, in the Zika forest. It's been around a long time, but there's a, there's not much known about this virus, and one of the reasons is, it's had mild symptoms. Eight out of ten people that get it, really don't even know they have it. You might have some, some slight flu-like symptoms, but it's been pretty mild, and that's why there hasn't been a lot of research done on it. Until now, where there's been some suspected links to birth defects in pregnant women, and, in Brazil, and Central America, and in the Caribbean. Also, we're starting to get some imported cases into the United States, that's where a traveler will go down there, get bitten, and come back here and start showing symptoms, and go to the doctor, and then they find out they have it. Uh, there's also been a link that it could possibly be sexually transmitted, so, so those two, two things, they are really what's brought it to the forefront of the news. It's currently being transmitted by Adesegipti, which is a species of mosquito that is not found here in Rankin County. It's found in Central and South America, and some along the coast, New Orleans, you can see, find the species some. But we do have a very, very similar species here called Adesalpictus, that are container breeders, they breed right around people's homes, they breed in flower pots and clogged up gutters, kiddies, swimming pools that are left out to fill up with water. They, one way to go after this mosquito is a little different than what we normally do in mosquito control. We've always been taught dusk and dawn, that's when we need to protect ourselves, that's when we need to wear repellents, and wear our long sleeves, that's when you see your spray trucks out driving at night. This particular mosquito bites during the day, so it's out all day long, driving spray trucks at night through your neighborhoods aren't really effective against this mosquito, so there, there's some other steps, and an integrated mosquito program to kinda go after this particular mosquito. Public education is one, you know, you want a well-educated public on mosquitoes, that when they go out to their yard, they say, okay, I know my flower pot here's gonna breed mosquitoes, let me turn that over, or let's clean out these gutters, or let's get rid of these tires. Tires are a very, very big breeding ground for this particular Adesalpictus mosquito. Talks such as this, we have print material that we can distribute to schools and places like that, that go a long way towards helping with this. Larvae siding, same thing we do, you know, going through the streets, looking through places that are breeding mosquitoes, treating them before they become adults. And then targeted adult siding, we have a good relationship with the Health Department, I'm, I'm in contact with them all the time, and if we have any imported cases, that, that's how, it's not currently in the county, that's how it would, it could possibly get here, is a traveler bring it back. And if we know that, we can kinda target that area. Health Department would be in touch with that person, and try to limit their exposure to local mosquitoes, and then we, we could do door-to-door treatments around in that area to, to help with that. But again, I guess the main thing is, right now, there, this particular mosquito is not out right now, it's, you know, gonna wait till the water, the weather is a little bit warmer, water temperatures warm up a little bit, and then we may start seeing it. But currently, it's not here in the county, and I just wanted to come talk to y'all a little bit, let you know about it, and that we are here, and, you know, ready to...
So, all of our citizens are safe until it gets warmer?
From mosquitoes.
Yeah.
I, again, this mosquito that's trans, that's really carrying this disease down there is not here in Rankin County, it's, there's a similar species that could potentially carry it, but it's not right now, so. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Next on the agenda is Sherri Thompson with Frontiers.
Good morning. Good morning. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to take just a couple of minutes, I was, 'cause I asked for the opportunity to let Mr. Gaines, Mr. Morris, and Mr. Cross learn a little bit about Frontiers, because this is something that is in every one of your districts, and I want you to be knowledgeable. Of course, some of you may have been in Frontiers when you were children, 'cause you're all young, or you may have children or grandchildren that have participated. Frontiers is the after-school enrichment program for Rankin County School District, I heard Larry over there. And we serve kindergarten through sixth grade students in Rankin County schools, as a, as a source for parents to have a good after-school place for their children to be. We are self-funded, everything that I do in Frontiers is covered by the tuition that the parents pay for their children to stay with us. We've been around for quite a while, we're currently in our 28th year, I'm in my 27th year and 26th year as the director. We currently have 16 sites, we are at Rouse, Stonebridge, Brandon Elementary, and Brandon Middle School, we are at Steens Creek, and Florence Elementary in Florence, Richland Elementary and Upper Elementary in Richland, we're at Pilahatchee, at Pisgah, and all five of the Northwest Rankin Zone schools, at Flowood, Northwest Elementary, Highland Bluff, North Shore, and Oakdale. We are actually in every elementary school except Puckett, and the only reason we're not there right now is because it is self-funded, I have to have enough students signed up to be able to support a site there, and for the last couple of years, we've not been successful. But every, every year I come back and try for, hopefully, next year, we will have another site in Puckett. This is a very structured program, this provides an opportunity for children to be in their own school, in their own community, with their friends. We are staying in the school itself, so we are able to best utilize our dollars. We have an opportunity to work with them, they get a snack, they have homework assistance time, they have an opportunity for outside play and games, and we have a very extensive enrichment curriculum, where we are doing thematic units on things like space, oceans, far East, Mother Nature, Good Earth, Cowboys and Indians, folklore, and so forth. We have about forty different units, where there's a different topic every week, and they're doing art projects and science experiments, and we have books and puppets and puzzles and games, a lot of guest speakers and so forth. Occasionally, you will get a little happy on your desk here at the Board of Supervisors, that will be made by the children at some of the sites, this is just a little way we have of letting you know, we're out here and look at some of the cute things that our kids are doing, and they always include chocolate, because I think that's a good thing. That is a service that we're providing parents, you know, we have over 1,600 kids that we're keeping a day in these schools. And so, this is an opportunity to keep costs down, and provide that good, safe place for parents to have their kids in the afternoon. But besides the service that we provide parents and the students in Rankin County, we're also a large employer, do all my own hiring, training, and so forth, and right now, I have about 175 to 180 people working in Frontiers. So we're a pretty viable economic source for these people in Rankin County as well. I employ a lot of college students, mothers, grandmothers, bivocational youth pastors, ministers, firemen and policemen, when they have off shifts and they wanna substitute, so we do feel like we provide a good service. I just wanted to make you aware of that, the new board members should have gotten a handbook also this week, so that you can see a little bit about Frontiers. This board has always, through all of the years since it started, been very supportive of Frontiers, and has recognized the service that we provide your constituents. And from financial banking in the very beginning, to help us get our enrichment curriculum going, all the way up to just being a support, so I wanted the opportunity to let you, as new board members, know, if at any time you would like to go to one of the schools in your district and actually see Frontiers, we're there until six o'clock every day, I would love to take you and let you meet some of the staff and see firsthand what it is we're doing, I think Jared can attest to that, he's been vile a few times as well. And one other side note, that doesn't have anything to do with Frontiers, but Mr. Gaines, I understand you will be representing the board on the WIA, the Workforce Investment Board, and through this board's appointment, I have been on that board for now seventeen years, so I look forward to working with you on that. They told me it was a little temporary assignment, so guess what, we may see each other for a long time. So I do look forward in visiting with you and working with you.
We look forward to him being there, too.
I look forward to working with you, and I'm, I'm glad to know now that I'm on that board.
I did my homework, so I'm pretty sure you're the one, so.
Thank you, guys.
And if any time you'd like to meet with me to learn a little bit more about what's been going on for seventeen years, I would be glad to visit with you as well.
I do want to, I would like for you just to maybe bring me up to the last four, five years, 'cause I won't remember what you told me the other ten years.
I got you, I'd be glad to.
And I do support, especially in the rural areas, what y'all are doing, it is a big, big need.
Thank you.
Actually, Steve, it came with the position, Walter was there before you, so...
I think that's how they figured out you'd be good for the job.
You just elected into it.
This is one I will enjoy doing.
Thank you. If anyone has a question, I'd be glad to answer it, otherwise, just thank you for the opportunity to share.
Thank you.
Thank you. Larry, are you saying you're special, too?
And old, I think he just put us both in that group. Thank you, I appreciate it.
And one other thing I wanted to add, Ms. Thompson, on that, my son's been in Frontiers, all the way up until this last year, the sixth grade, we kinda started taking him out of it, but kindergarten through fifth grade at Northwest Elementary, he's been in it, so thank you for the program you do there, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Deborah Hendricks. So we need to skip her? Alright, we have Missus Aubrey Hayes. Oh, Mr. Aubrey Hayes, shit, shoot, I'm sorry.
I was fixing to say, where did it say that?
I think this is about the sixth year I've come before the board to discuss Mill Creek and its drainage issues. A little background about Mill Creek, was Mill Creek was developed in four parts back in 1974, complete with a dam across Mill Creek. Everything worked pretty good the first couple of years, until a big rain came along in 79, and development occurring in Castlewood caused Mill Creek to silt up. At that point in time, the developer of the subdivision was required to remove the dam from Mill Creek, and dredge Mill Creek from the dam back south to Lakeland Drive. The dredging of Mill Creek caused the banks of Mill Creek to become unstable, the county got into a series of earmarks from the federal government stabilizing the bank, but they never finished that project, because all, all of the earmarks ran out, the last one used to stabilize the firehouse that's on Mill Creek at Spellway Road. We have one of the homeowners in the neighborhood took it on himself to have some concrete rubble dumped in his front yard, about six or eight truckloads of it, and he had two teenage boys that spent a summer stabilizing the bank behind his house with concrete rubble. The question is, is the county ever gonna finish stabilizing the banks of Mill Creek? Because there is a real problem occurring where the ditch that runs into Mill Creek, that runs through the middle of Mill Creek, Mill Creek subdivision... Now, talk about the ditch is another piece of Mill Creek. When I moved there 31 years ago, that property behind my house was owned by the developer, a 40-foot strip. In the middle of it was a ditch. The county got a federal grant and converted the ditch all the way out to the property lines. There's now 22 properties abutting this ditch. There's various and sundry erosion problems happening. Y'all repaired one about a year or so ago, when the lady's driveway fell into the ditch. But right next door, you didn't repair the property next door, where the guy's fig trees fell off in the ditch. I now have about a five-foot strip behind my house that has rocks on it that I moved into my fence line I used to have. Now, y'all are coming up against the fence. Y'all are five foot on my property with the ditch erosion. I find it hard to believe if you would restore the- That's another interesting thing about the ditch. Y'all converted that ditch without ever getting ownership to it. I can't find where the developer ever conveyed title, but he told me he's happy. He ain't been taxed on it. So, you need to do something about that ditch. And there's one guy that's sandbagging right now, trying to hold his property in. And then, we talk about the streets and the gutters and the curbs. They're a lot of fun. The last time y'all were in there with an overlay was 20 or 25 years ago, and did a pretty lousy job of that, because you created some dams at intersections that hold water after a rain. And then, besides that, the curbs and gutters are now over 40 years old. They're cracking. You did do one thing. I created five, for six years, I submitted the same five work orders. This year, two of them got worked about a month ago, where the curb and gutters was missing. Now, I got three that's waiting resources becoming available. Now, I wonder how I go about getting resources to fix these other three before I turn in another 10 or 12. So, I need y'all to fix the drainage problems that are yours, that belong to the county, not to the homeowner, so the neighborhood will look not so rundown. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Fire Chief. Give me back up. Hang on, Mr. Chief, this lady came in. I forget which one it was. Deborah Hendricks?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is new to me, so I'm a little nervous.
State your name and everything.
My name is Deborah Hendricks, and I live at 411 Gore Road. I am here, I have some health and safety concerns to speak about. I would like to first say thank you to Mr. Gaines for his assistance with getting patches of work done on Gore Road. I need your assistance with the four coverts located on Gore Road. Over time, the coverts are now sitting in high water, and with the result of high rains, the front side of the coverts have a big hole, and water does not drain anymore. With the standing water you're around, and I have emailed pictures of the standing water for your review.
I'm looking now.
On Gore Road, we have a major problem with mosquitoes, and I need your help with. The concern with the mosquito disease, West Nile virus, and the Zika virus. I understand that the state has a mosquito problem. Would you please be open for Gore Road to be a test project area for eradicating this mosquito problem? If allowed by the county, the Vekker Disease Control conducts surveillance of mosquito trappings and send those samples to the Mississippi Health Department. I have also been in touch with Vekker Disease Control located in Jackson, Mississippi, and they also have an office in Rankin County. They can do mosquito trapping to test for diseases. And I also, at this time, would like to thank Sheriff Bailey. I wouldn't want to live in any other county. Mr. Bailey and his patrol officers have done a top-notch job with assisting me whenever I call, and I just wanted to tell him thank you today, and that's all I had.
Ms. Hendricks, right before you got here, Vekker was here, and we were discussing some problems that you're just talking about right now. They're very aware, and I'll see if we can get them to make sure that they check Gore Road. I know that's a low area.
Yes, sir.
You're right. Water stands there most of the year. It is a low, flat area, and I'll see if they will give us extra attention.
Okay. I do appreciate it, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks.
Now, Chief Wages, sorry to you, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you all for allowing me to come today. Early on, I'll get right to it. I don't want to take up much time. So, I drafted a letter on behalf of the Mississippi Fire Chiefs Association about two weeks ago, and we sent that out. And I was thinking that as that letter starts to get distributed out through the state, I wanted to make sure that you all knew exactly what was going on over the last five weeks as far as activities. And I think, Ms. Hendricks, did you distribute that letter?
Yes.
So, I'm just going to briefly go through that, and if you have any questions, I'll try my best to answer them. But I'll tell you upfront, I hadn't been able to get a lot of information on this, on how it applies, but I can tell you what I know. Now, on January the 20th, we were informed at the Mississippi Fire Chiefs Midwinter Conference that the State Insurance Department, MID, would be adopting a system to rate homeowners' insurance and also auto insurance throughout the state. Now, this company was State Farm, and they have patented this system. It's called the Grid System. And we have done a lot of research over the last five weeks and had several meetings about this, and we're still collecting information. And the purpose of me coming forward today is just to fill you in on what information we have and to let you know that we need your support in trying to gather information on this and go forward. We're worried about this affecting how the public protection class in the state works right now.
Yep.
And we're being assured that it's not going to, but we haven't found any evidence yet that backs that up. We've asked a lot of questions. We met with Commissioner Cheney on two occasions. Over the last five weeks, I've spoke with him on the phone. He simply assures us that it's not going to affect us negatively.
So, you want to ask him why he took it off and now brought it back?
His comments were, and I'm paraphrasing, his comments were that, as a whole, it would help the insurance rates throughout the state. And we don't know the homeowners' insurance rates throughout the state. The worry we have is we don't know how to effectively plan for this in the future. We've always used the Mississippi Rating Bureau and the class ratings to justify how we support our fire protection within the state. With this being coming in play, and State Farm having this patented, and them being such a large insurance policyholder or rider within the state, of course, it raises concerns of how the Rating Bureau will be incorporated into this. Now, I've read the patent myself, and there is no language in the patent that specifically addresses using the Rating Bureau's ISO system in this process.
Terry, I have a question. Why? This may be the wrong place to ask this. Why State Farm? From Katrina till now, if I've heard of any one homeowner's insurance agency that has had issues in Mississippi, State Farm has been always in that discussion. So, why State Farm?
I don't have a definite answer for you. This was started three years ago, and we've met several times and been assured that, twice told directly that it wouldn't be put into play. Then, we were told that if it was, that the Rating Bureau and our system of grading would stay in place. Then, we were, like I said, on January the 20th, it was announced that we're adopting it, and it's moving forward. And since that time, we've gotten some answers on how the grid system works. However, we're still looking for answers on how to plan for this and how to incorporate the fire rating bureau into this system, because it's two separate ways of rating homeowners' insurance. Like I said, we just don't have a lot of information on it, and that is what we're in the process of doing. Now, hopefully, between now and the summer conference, we're going to be collecting more information. We've reached out to MML. We've reached out to the Mississippi Association of Supervisors and brought them in to ask questions. And that, and one reason I'm here today is just to bring you up to speed that you're probably going to be getting a copy of this letter through the association at some point. We do know the grid system takes into account fire loss specifically, or loss of any kind that they're insuring. Now, that grid is expandable, so it will reach out to, collects the data that it needs to effectively rate that home or that policy. Now, the specifics of that is hard to understand, because it uses an algorithm that is written by people much smarter than myself, and it calculates that homeowner's rate. Now, to be fair, there probably will be some rates go down in the state, but on the flip side of that, there's going to be some rate increases. But as far as the emergency services side of it, the fire chiefs are concerned that in the future, how are we going to be able to justify enhancing our fire protection within the state?
Yep.
Because you know how we do it now. More manpower, more water, more equipment, your rate goes down, your insurance rates go down, and that's what we base it on. That's not included into this system. And then, the further concern is, in talking with the Rating Bureau, that is, if this goes throughout the insurance companies other than State Farm, and they start primarily using this as their rating system, where does the Rating Bureau stand in the big scheme of this? So, now, I know you have a lot of questions, and so do we. And we hope to have another sit-down with Commissioner Cheney over the next few weeks. So, right now, we're just trying to get the support to stand behind the fire chiefs in trying to collect this information.
Well, you certainly have mine. This is as much of a fox garden, a hen house, as I've ever seen. I don't think the insurance agencies are going to do something to lower our premiums.
No. No, we're doing all this work with our, to get the ratings, our ratings lowered to help premiums, and this looks like something basically set up to derail that.
Yeah.
So, you have my-
Thank you, and please keep going.
Hey, Chief, I want to ask one thing. The letter written from the Chiefs Association, was that written last year or just a week or so ago?
The top copy was written two weeks ago, and I should have mentioned that. The back copy is the resolution that was adopted by the Mississippi Fire Chiefs Association in February the 3rd of 2015 that directly opposed initiating this system. Now, after that letter was written, we were assured that if we look at this, it will not affect the public protection class. And then, we're still being assured that, even though it's been adopted, but we're not being explained to us how it's not going to affect it. So, speaking with the Rating Bureau, they're not sure. They're saying we just don't know.
Yeah, and there's another factor in this whole grid system that matters. It's not just fire laws. It's crime, theft, things of that nature. It expands it as well. It's not just fire movement. It's a very, very complex system that's-
Daniel, are they circumventing the system we have now? Is that what?
There's, the current system we have right now is the Rating Bureau comes out. The Rating Bureau is not a state agency. It's a private agency that comes out and evaluates districts and cities, and just like Chief Wages mentioned, it revolves around a couple of key elements. Obviously, manpower, water supply, things of that nature. This is a box system, grid system, that they're going to put in certain categories and areas that's expandable or able to move based on the criteria that they set inside that box. So, you could put a box in the city of Flowood, and they might be overlapping into the city of Jackson. So, I mean, depending on how the grid system is laid out, because it's expandable, based on the amount of data they require to collect inside that box. So, State Farm is the only one right now that said, this is a system we like, which is better. And you can go to different states, and there's different ISO ratings and different setups of fire ratings, how they evaluate those systems. But State Farm said, this is a system that they want. That's the only insurance carrier that we're aware of right now that's taking this system to try to put in. So, there's a lot of questions on it right now, Steve, that we just don't know the answers to. A lot of variables in it.
We've reached out to different communities. In Rankin County, as of now, State Farm writes about a little under 11% of the policies. But if you move out through the states, North Mississippi, down toward Hattiesburg, that number increases. So, we don't know what the effects will be on insurance homeowners' rates, but the significant worry we have is how to plan for the future of the fire protection in our state with this system in place. Now, that's what we want to answer. We've come to the conclusion, this may be here. This may be the way things start to go, but we've got to be able to adjust. But just keep in mind, with fire protection now, not only comes fire protection, every one of you know what goes along with that. I mean, we're sending out medical, EMS, all types of different rescues, extrication. When that manpower starts to go away, because it's no longer rated in the capacity of helping that insurance rate, then those other things start to diminish, and then we start losing sight of what we're originally there for. So, in closing, we will come back to you as soon as we can with further information as we process through this, and I can't give you a timeline on that. I wish I could.
Yeah, there's discussion on a hybrid system, you know, that takes the state rating bureau as it is now and puts it in the middle of the grid system and allows them to work together to determine the actual rating of it. So many variables, just like what he said. I mean, all that stuff's in discussion. It could help or could hurt you, depending on how you fall in the box.
And we've done a survey-
I wonder if it's something the association, Superbroad Association, could have some influence or needs to be involved in? Because I think it needs to be awareness all over the state, obviously.
We sent the copy of this letter you have to the Executive Board for the Supervisors and for MML.
Oh, good.
So, they're aware of what's going on.
Good deal.
And we've met with MML's representatives already.
Okay.
What we, and just like Daniel was saying, we've done a survey on five states two weeks ago, talked to different fire marshals, fire chiefs within those states that are doing this. They couldn't give us any information.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Thank you all.
She's still so new. Still so new right now. Let's see. Next on the agenda, we have Charles Parker, our county consulting engineer.
Thank you, sir. I only have one item on the agenda for today, and that is the discussion of and potential action on the Rankin County Circuit Court parking lot improvement project. We have been authorized to come up with any way that we could add some parking spaces up here out from that retaining wall. We have done so, and we were also instructed to get some quotes on doing this because of the amount of money involved. And if you do not go out for competitive bidding, that will save you probably 60, 60 or more days. Our estimate, our engineering services estimate to do this work was $52,188. We sought individuals, you have to do a minimum of three under this type program, and we got a quote from Southern Rock for $72,170. We got a quote from Hemp Hill Construction Company for $54,210. And the last quote that we got was from Orton Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $47,275. And my question is, do you want to go this route? And the attorney may want to put some kind of verbiage in here about what the board is allowed to do and not- And if you do not go out for competitive bidding, that will save you probably 60, 60 or more days. Our estimate, our engineering services estimate to do this work was $52,188. We sought individuals, you have to do a minimum of three under this type program. And we got a quote from Southern Rock for $72,170. We got a quote from Hemp Hill Construction Company for $54,210. And the last quote that we got was from Orton Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $47,275. And my question is, do you want to go this route? And the attorney may want to put some kinds of verbiage in here about what the board is allowed to do and not...
Question first. I think this was something initiated last year, I guess. You had ten layout. How many more parking spaces are we getting?
About 10.
10 more?
Yeah, we've got a few trees up there that's going to go, those smaller trees, and some shrubs.
Four thousand, five hundred spot. I can do math. That's about my limit. That's about my limit.
You got it.
What's your bid?
So we're reading full trigger on this, or not?
I don't know. What...
Not? Not.
What do we, I'm trying to remember, what did it entail? It was moving like part of that flower bed, maybe?
Yes, that flower bed, no shrubs would be gone. We're redoing that part of the parking lot next to the trees, coming on over to the retaining wall. We're not coming all the way over to the retaining wall, but we are getting some trees in there. There's a storm drain that has to be realigned, that sort of thing.
The storm drain created some of it, I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
I mean, a great deal of that cost.
Yeah.
Plaza area, this area, that would be eliminated in large measure to allow additional parking there.
Right.
Thought process of you guys, behind me, looking at this, is that the 10 spaces don't sound like much, but the new third circuit judge that's in place is seating a jury now on a regular basis. And you have two full jury, Ben Ires, coming in. And you have one additional jury seated for each matter during each court term where they have cases to run. Thought process was to allow the additional spaces. And at the time, we had hoped to get 12, but to allow those spaces to be utilized as dedicated parking for jurorors who are seated in matters. We were going to ask the sheriff, and I think he was aware of this, at least I hope he was aware of this, and I think he wasn't. We're going to try to cordon an area off on jury days to allow jurorors to have those new spaces. So that's kind of the thought process.
Well, you're telling, somewhere between 40 and 100 people coming in for four to five, and we're going to put 10 spots to...
Yes, we weren't solving the Ben Iri parking issue, Steve. This was just to allow for jurorors who are seated to have a convenient place to park close to the wall. Okay.
We just tried to take what was out there and see how many more we could squeeze into it, sort of divided.
Yeah.
With some realignment and so forth and so on.
Are we looking for more action? Is that what we're looking for here, or are we going to do that on Monday?
It doesn't matter either way. The main thing is, you know, from my standpoint, is did you want to go with the three quotes? Since the low one is under the 50,000, or do you want to consider putting the job out for bid? Which, that'll kill another 60 days, probably easy, getting bids in. Or do you want to forget the whole thing? I know some of you are not familiar at all with what we're talking about to some extent. But that's where I am. I mean, if you voted today, let's go with this process below 50,000, which is legal, I assume, according to the attorney. Then we would go ahead and initiate contract documents with Orton Construction Company. If you're not going to go that route, if you want to advertise the job, then we'll get an advertisement ready and so forth. Or if you want to can it.
I would like to have a little time to look at it myself. To me, $50,000 or $47,000 is a lot of money for 10 parking spots.
Yes, sir.
And before we pull the trigger, and I sure like to have more information for myself.
Sure.
And these guys, if they wanted, they can do it without me. I would just be saying, "I'm not for it."
What kind of person you looking to get?
We can move to 17, we can move to 15.
I want to look around, see if there's any other places or any way we can avoid spending $50,000 for 10 parking spots to set jurorors when that one, we're not solving the problem when we've got 50 people. Every time we set a jury to come in, we'd maybe be solving a problem for 10 out of the 12 that's actually sitting during the trial. But we've still got the bigger problem of when we are picking juries and witnesses and stuff. So, I don't know. I would, I mean, if y'all would, but I'd like to look at it a little further.
That's a good question. Buster, does that include repair of the wall where we've had to dismantle that for that drainage issue that we had? Does that take that area into consideration to redo that?
Repair what the county had torn out.
Right, what we had to do, and doesn't. We will have to incur some cost. At the top of the stairs, we had to tear off the sidewalk. There was a drainage issue, and we had to replace that culvert. So even if we don't do that, I don't know how much it'll be. I'll have to get with Johnny, but we will have to incur some cost to repair that retaining wall anyway. Because right now, it's just grade at all, after we had to take that wall.
We held up on doing anything.
To see if this would be...
In light of this particular consideration. We didn't want to have to tear out what we just put in.
So ideally, it would be, if we decide to do four, do it all at once, do repairs, and then at the same time, do the construction.
In close proximity of one another. We'd probably put the wall after the parking lots.
Yes, sir. I would definitely have it later.
Would it be prudent then, maybe to go back to Orton and the other two and say, "Take an consideration of this additional issue that she's brought up, and give us a new number on what that construction would be?"
Anything that pushes us over that 50 number is going to be a problem.
So we get over 50, we've got to go after the four.
We've got to go after bids.
Yeah, you've got to go, all right. And county employees can fix it back. I mean, they...
I think Johnny had planned on doing a lot of it. I don't know what portion of, depending on the wall, what has to be done, or if it could just be a grade into the new area. So that would be an additional expense.
Do you want to look around and see if you see some additional opportunities for down to 15th of March?
Yeah, I'd like Buster to show me what we're looking at and look around.
And I'm of the same mind as Steve on this deal. I mean, just...
Table it to the 15th and revisit it then?
It's a lot of money.
Would it make sure it's on 15th?
And I'll talk to Johnny and see what portion of that he would have to, you know, farm out to somebody else or what we could do ourselves on that.
What part of this can our people not use?
I don't know.
That was something I'm going to get with Johnny and find out what portion our people can do on the reconstruction of the wall of that area.
Talking about parking lot.
The parking lot itself, that I don't...
Bill Robinson's stuff.
Well, there's a good bit of urban gutter work involved in this, and there's some imminent adjustments. You know, when there's escalation, so forth and so on, I'll go down through this.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, I won't say the county couldn't do it, but probably be best for a contractor to do something like this, in my opinion. But, you know, what opinion is a word?
See what you pay for.
It's not, I'm totally against it. It's just 50,000 here, 100,000 here, 500,000 here. You know, after about two months, there goes 25% of our budget, and we...
Need a motion to move it, or is this...
Table it.
Hi, Craig.
Yeah, fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Buster.
Gentlemen, under my section, item A is a presentation by JH&amp;H Architects, our planners and tears, on discussing the chance for a justice court project.
Hey, you got the floor.
Welcome. Good morning. If you remember back on January 28th, probably have a better memory than me, the board instructed us to make some changes into the courthouse plans. And so we're here today to review those changes for the first time with the board. All we're going to be presenting today are the preliminary concepts. And essentially, what this included, and why it's taken about 30 days, was to remove the land records of the Chancery Clerk Department out of the building. And it would seem that all you had to do is take that chunk out, and everything would be the same. But it wasn't quite that easy. Plus, what we found, that if we took a little study to it, we could probably save some additional money. And we had to reorganize things. So that's what we're here today for. And so what we've done, let me just say what our goals and priorities were in this phase of the project. It's similar to the last time. First and foremost, we want to provide a safe and secure environment for the public, for the judges and their staff, which is not, really doesn't currently exist, at least to the current standards. The second thing we want to do during this time is take this opportunity to see if we couldn't formulate some more substantial cost savings. I know that's always interest. And by doing that, by taking the land records out, we want to rearrange it to see if we couldn't even make the plans more efficient. The third thing we want to do is, we found out going through the original design, is try and economize some of the site costs. If you're familiar with this site, you realize that from the west to the east, slope's about 40 feet. So we're having to deal with that. Our original concept remained the same. What we want to do is try and locate the building in the center. And the reason for that is that we can balance the site with dirt as much as possible. The soil conditions here are not really bad. There is some existing field that we'll have to deal with. But the Yazoo clay in all locations, except for right in this corner, is down deep enough that we really don't have to mitigate that. Another consideration of the plan, which I know there's some interest is, is providing a definite separation between the Chancery and the Justice Court facilities. And as we get into the floor plans, we'll look at that. And the final goal that we were trying to do was provide as much parking on the site as possible. And one thing, by taking out the land records and redesigning the building, we're able to make a much more compact footprint, which allowed us to gain about 15 additional parking places. We're up to now 194 parking places. So what you'll see in this site plan is North Street down here. The building is still oriented in the north-south direction simply because that's the way the contours of the land run. Typically, the savings in dealing with dirt work is to run with the contours and not against... We have gradually looked, we did study just very temporarily, turning the building so it can face north and south. But again, it starts to create an additional cost with dirt and things like that. So we haven't got, we decided to abandon that. What we would have down here, initially what we're in the plan is to have a main entrance off of North Street that would have one in and two out, so that as you came out, you could turn right to go that way, or left to go that way. We have a secondary entrance up at Timberline. What we would like to investigate is putting another entrance, either somewhere around in here. Now, I think, if I'm not mistaken, the codes for branding requires us to stay about 300 feet away from an intersection. Of course, that's about where we're at right here. But we would like to investigate with the city having another opening here. We think it would ease traffic flow out of the site. In the grades, one thing we were able to do with this compacted foot plan, we lowered the building down some, so the grades are lower here. So this would basically, in this area, be on grade. This is still on a hill coming up. But what we've done is that the public parking is basically on three sides of the building. As you remember, for your new supervisors, we have a secure parking lot back here for the staff and the judges. There's approximately 53 spaces. This is a gate operated, to be operated with a card key or some kind of combination. And again, the idea is to try and separate public parking from staff parking to avoid any potential conflicts. Now, we'll never be able to probably, you know, not have a situation, but we're trying to create the situation that's as safe and secure. This would be all fenced in, and then the staff would have secure entrances into the building where they would never mesh with the public entrance, which is right down here. Another thing this plan was allowed us to do, the prosecutor office requested that we have a separate entrance for them, which we've done over here. And basically, that's not a public entrance. That's when they're dealing with attorneys. But rather than having to have attorneys, send somebody up here to get an attorney and walk all the way through the court to their corner, which is located back here, they would like to have a separate entrance, which this is able to solve. We had this in the original design, but due to the size of the building and the contours, we had about 100-foot-long ramp in here, which cost about $100,000. So by compacting this, we were able to save that cost. We eliminate that cost, at least that's what we're thinking now. Buster's people will help us work that out. We think we can eliminate that ramp. Another thing we did, we created a drive-through area for the Sally Port. And so that, before, the Sally Port was back here and more of the secure, and we had two of them. Again, in an effort to try and save money, we restricted that to one that we think will work, and we'll get into that a little bit more in the floor plan. But having this bridge which connects this upper level, this comes into the upper level, which is the Chancery, then we already got a roofed area for the Sally Port that would be underneath that, and it would be a little bit more understandable in the floor plan. And then we would have, you could come in here and have an elevator and go down, or we would have one, two, possibly three locations for steps to get down to this lower level. So this upper parking lot is on the same level as the Chancery. These lower levels are on the same level as Justice Court. And basically, the plan has a Justice Court on a lower level and a Chancery Court on an upper level. And we can come back to any of this. I know, since we've been working on this for a while, it's easy for me to understand, but we'll come back to it. Basically, right now, we have one main entrance. And that's always been the theory, the theory of one main entrance was to provide one secure checkpoint with all your metal detectors and to ease on staffing of the Sheriff's Department. Now, there is opportunities if we need to have additional entrances for the public, we can look at that. But we've got one main entrance here that would be staffed by the sheriffs, deputies or bailiffs. You would have your metal detectors. And you would go through here and on the lower level, and this would be the Justice Court facilities. Now, the Chancery Court facilities is on the upper level. The only way to get to them is through this elevator and stairs. And what we proposed is a door system there. And it could be, it could be a regular door system, or it could be an electronic door system that would have to be opened by the security people to allow people going to the Chancery Court instead of going to the Justice Court. But what we tried to do is create this separation that was requested between the Justice and the Chancery Court. So essentially, the only people that need to go on the first floor would be Justice Court people. Chancery Court, there'd be no need for Chancery Court people to go up to the second floor at this point, or Justice Court people to go up there. As you come in, we were able to locate the public restrooms here. So what you see in the green is the public circulation. And again, what we're trying to do is separate the public from the back of the house, which is the secure judges and staffs. So the public cannot get back to this area unless they are buzzed in or escorted back by staff personnel or deputy sheriff. The program requested two courthouses in the Justice, two courtrooms in the Justice. We have a large courtroom here that would have a jury, a jury box. This seats approximately 150. We have a smaller courtroom here that will seat somewhere between 80 and 90. And many of you may not know, they actually have two Justice Court rooms now, but the small one is not used, other than for weddings or something of that nature. But what we've tried to do in this building is plan for growth and needs that they have now. So as Rankin County grows, they will definitely need two courtrooms. Just to kind of go through this, this is a jury box. On this end, we have the jury deliberation room, which would have its own restrooms. Now, this area is the Sally Port drive-through. So the sheriff, and we can work this out, whichever works best, can either drive through this way, drop off the Sally Port and drive out, or do just the opposite, whichever works best in his security. And those are things we'll have to meet with them. But the Sally Port drop-off would be here. The sheriff would bring the prisoners in, and these are the holding cells. And right now, we've got those located between both court facilities to be easy. But what we've got is a male holding cell, we've got a female holding cell, and we've got a security station here with glass the sheriff's deputy can visually have contact with. We also have a witness testify room, so, which gives you the option to have the prisoner in here with glass that can testify before the court, so he never has to get into the courtroom. Or if the judges prefer, they can be walked around and testify out in here. Either way, this system seems to work very well in a couple instances we've looked at and studied. In this back-of-house area, in this area, there is no... In this back-of-house area, in this area, there is no occupied space particularly, and we did that on purpose so that as prisoners are brought in, they don't have to walk through any occupied spaces, it's all cut out. But in your large courtroom, you would have the, and we've got to blow this up and work it out, you'd have actually the judges' bench, the circuit clerk, and the justice clerk, excuse me, wrong court, and witness station, and then the court fines here. In the center here, we have some meeting spaces for witnesses. We actually have four, which is four more than what they really have right now, and a law library, which is basically a station of computers, not really books. Now, everybody has Nexus, so, but a place for attorneys to come in and do their paperwork there. As you walk down this corridor, you have the smaller courtroom here in this area. You also have, we have five judges' chambers. There's currently four right now, but again, looking toward the future, we've got a fifth one. You know, I don't know that there'd ever be a sixth one. We have constables areas right in here, we have a judges' conference room. We also, in this area, something the Sheriff had suggested, we have an officer staging area. Right now, where they're staged is you take up about thirty places in the courtroom for the officers waiting for their cases, so that's, you know, that uses up valuable seating. If you go to this right now, this current courtroom is flat-out full, with people standing in the corridors when they have that. So this will help alleviate some of that space. Down at the further end is the justice clerk area.
Can I stop?
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
In the small courtroom, it's set up for future growth in case we had, is there area there for a jury box? Because I don't see it.
No, sir. It's understanding.
I know it's not there, but is it where you can, I mean, if we're going to use it, we would need a jury box.
I think there is room where we can put that in there. However, and Justice Shirley may correct me, it's...
I don't believe we need, because the number of cases that we do that allow jury trials are limited, so I don't understand if we need two jury boxes. Just for a jury box, probably.
But we can look at that, and I think there is, Steve, ample room to do that.
For future.
Yeah, for future, right. This courtroom is set up with a ramp because it's wide. This courtroom may need to be set up with a possible future lift. We do not have to put that in right now. In past presentations, I think I mentioned how expensive those lifts are for handicapped accessibility, fifty to sixty thousand dollars. And as we go up to the Chancery Court, you'll see how we eliminated that future to save some money. But the Justice Judges' Chambers are all, again, back-of-house, this whole area is secure. The Justice Clerk area is right in here. We've increased, she has ten stations, we've increased that. This is all based on our meetings we had with them over a year. We have an area where the public would come in to pay fines. We've got two little separate areas, this is something we'll have to work with them on. They had requested a separation between civil fines and criminal fines. We can allow, if this works out for security, we can allow separate public entrances down on this end where they don't have to come through here and...
Where, where'd you push?
Down on this end, right here on the north end. We have a door there, and we can come in here. We can separate that if we need to by putting some additional doors here. If that works out better, this is something we want to get back with the users, where they don't have to come through the metal detectors. This would probably be much more convenient, but we need to talk to the users, and we need to talk to the Sheriff.
Now, we've gone through the users and dealt with them a lot, and you've incorporated this, and you've incorporated our ideas. Is this not something we think we can make work right here?
Yes, it is. It's basically similar, but we've tweaked it some, Jake. We think it's, we actually think that this, by making it more efficient, works better.
Okay.
But we, and you'll see when I get to the end, we're going to talk about costs. Being how, the assistant, the Justice Clerk and her assistant in here, we have evidence, and then this is her court records. This suite color here, whatever color it is, off pink or whatever, is prosecutor suite, currently occupied by Richard Wilson. He's got his office, two assistants. You come in here, and this is a waiting area that his assistant, Kim, has a window to view in. This is a secure door that she can buzz him into it, and then there's storage. But again, my understanding is that this will be primarily for meetings between attorneys and him, not the public. So that's basically the first floor. This occupies about twenty-one thousand square feet, it's about, almost exactly the same as it was last time in size. If we go up to the second level...
Let me ask you one question real quick.
Sure.
You've had discussions and all with Jessica and everything over in Justice Court. She's on board with this whole thing, she's seen it?
She's, not the new one, but this, but...
Do we got plans to sit down with her and discuss that?
Yes, yes.
At some point?
This is essentially the same, Daniel, the same relationship, but we did change a few of the spaces, but that would be my suggestion, is to go back and just make sure that we've got all the, if there's any minor changes. We don't look to go back and change the whole plan.
Yeah, I just want to be sure that Jessica's all, is involved as well on this, since that's her office.
We've met with her on about three or four occasions, actually, and we, and our intentions go back with all the users one more time, just to make sure.
Caution you on that.
Yeah, I understand. Again, let me reemphasize, okay, that's the bottom floor. To get to the upper floor, you have to go through these doors, and if they're electronically controlled or whatever, then anybody, only the Sheriff or the bailiff can let them in there, but that's something we need to work out from an administrative standpoint. We think it provides a very good separation. We actually, I actually think of the opinion, it's a better separation than what we had On the second level, you come up the elevators or you come up the stairs, you have a separate lobby, and you come through these doors. Now, this suite here, we left. Good, we can do whatever we want to. This is Larry's court records, and the thing about this plan that works better than last time, if you remember, or for those of you who weren't here, because we had land records and court records, and we tried to tie them together, that was on the lower level, the same with the Justice Court. This time, we've moved it upstairs so that the court records are on the same level as the Chancery, so there won't be going back and forth between floors. And by doing that, we were able to save some circulation space because we were trying to provide all these secure elevators and stairs. So we did that. Again, this plan is very similar in relationship to the functions before. You come in here, here's the public area, this is the administrative staff, and we increased, we doubled the number of workstations from three to six, so there's future growth there. This is Shayna's commit area. One of the requests for that was to be near security if she did have any issues. The other request is that the design, she also doubles to cover this area when there's people out on vacation, so that's a relationship. This is the chief deputy's office with Linda, Chief Court Deputy's office, so he can oversee the relationship there, and this is a work area. This is the court records area that we have now, if you're familiar with that area. We're accommodating all the file cabinets and things they have now. We are not increasing it for future records. We just, it was, it was a feeling that we're creating a lot of space just to store records, and in the future, this could be scanned. Current records are right here, this is larger than what they have now, it's almost double, and basically, this is for attorneys to get in and work with. One reason we doubled the space is because right now, they have high-density storage, but the problem with that is, if you have more than one attorney, you're rolling these things back and forth, and they can't, they have to wait on each other. So the request from Larry's office was not to get rid of that. This is Larry's office, again, you come off the corridor, you go through the, his administrative assistant, Amy, and then this is his office back here, which has a little, has room for a conference area, and then it has a private toilet for those areas. These are staff toilets for both the court, Chancery Clerk and the court staff, and these are, again, public restrooms. And again, by retweaking the plan, we stack these right above the first floor, so we save on some plumbing. One thing you will notice, if you'll look, this whole thing is, before, we had basically a horseshoe of a courtyard. We were able to save on exterior wall space by putting these together. The courtyard before was separating the two buildings. We think we've accomplished that by saving some money and by this, putting them on different floors. You have four Chancery Courts. One thing that is different from this plan from the other one, we do not, on the other one, we had three, same size, but we had one large that accommodated a hundred feet, but we do not have that in this one, but we were saving space. But you got the, they come down, each one has meeting rooms for the attorneys. This is the waiting area, which we divided, again, like before into four, so that if different family, things going on, we can put different families in different little waiting areas instead of having them all together. We have some additional waiting in here, again, we have the attorneys, we call it a lounge, it's actually attorneys, workroom and law library. It was requested that they need to have a space where they can get together and work some things out among attorneys without having to, and make things more efficient. The back of the house, again, you see, this is the public area. All the green area is secure, well, they can get into the courtrooms, but the back of the house is all secure. You've got the judges, you've got two staff attorneys, you've got the judges' chambers along this back wall, and then you've got the court reporters and their support areas in these areas in here. So everything is secure from that standpoint. But the plan is much more efficient, we think, of course, we had prices, but we've done a little pricing. We have a smaller foundation, we have a smaller roof plan. If you remember before, we had a one-story Justice Court and a two-story. So by doing all that, by having less exterior wall space, by having one Sally Port, by being able to stack the restrooms, doing away with some ramps, and we hope, making more but smaller retaining walls, we're going to be able to save some money. We went from roughly sixty-five thousand square feet down to fifty-five to sixty, or fifty-six thousand square feet, almost, we feel like, knock on wood, ten thousand square feet of savings. Now, what does that mean in terms of cost? Our November estimate for construction costs was approximately nineteen point four million dollars for the building, plus another nine hundred and twenty-five thousand for furnishings. What we're thinking construction costs are now are going to be somewhere between sixteen and a half to seventeen and a half million, and eight to nine hundred thousand dollars for furnishings, so that's going to be somewhere between, we're not off too much, two to three million dollars savings.
Like your direction you're going.
I keep liking the things you keep saying about this as cost savings. I like the term you're throwing in there.
Well, again, we were able to say, well, I can't take all the credit because you took out the land records, and obviously, there's a savings there, but because we did that, we could really squeeze, that was a big chunk of space, and we could reorganize and squeeze this down, and we've relooked at the site again. It's, as you know, it's a very difficult site.
After a meeting with the judge this week, I know there's a big concern about separation.
And I don't, you know, the, I think we've solved that, Jake. I feel like we've solved it better than before. I guess these are...
Well, I just wanted you to explain to the other board members that weren't in that meeting, so everybody can understand how there is separation between Justice Court and Chancery.
Well, I think there's a concern, especially from the Chancery judges, Chanceries, of the number of people that'd be coming to all these courts and the mixing and the concern of, because with Chancery, there's so many family issues and sometimes small children having that clientele mix. Now, we still got one main entrance, and the reason for this is from a security standpoint and from a manning of a number of sheriff personnel. However, you can't get to the Chancery without going through these doors, and again, that's where we're going to control the secure point. Now, if that's still an issue, we can create a second public entrance into here, but it will require a little more space and it will require additional personnel.
We would have to double staff.
Yes, sir.
And...
I got a question though for you. If you have the Chancery in full bloom, far as the courts and JP, how much space, how many people will be able to come through that little concentrated area without creating backup or just, you know, having to work through the security, you know, area?
Well, it goes pretty fast right now. The main thing that I've seen by going to some of these things is, there's usually one, again, correct me, Judge, it's usually, right now, Mondays where you have your bulk of your Justice Court, and I think Chancery goes four days, and then on Fridays, they meet, they have, they meet with the attorneys.
Especially one day, you're going to have a kind of a...
That's my understanding right now. Now, that could change, but we've got, this is a fairly large lobby, and we can bring this out further if we need to. And what we've got is two metal detectors, so we would envision it'd be, you know, two people controlling that. And now, this is, this is where we've got to go back, revisit with the Sheriff, and just make sure that our thinking along that's okay, but...
Let me ask you one other thing, similar to the question I had on the first floor. What was Judge Grant and Roberts and McLaurin's take on the second floor?
They hadn't seen it yet.
They hadn't seen it?
Y'all are the first persons to see this revised plan.
This is the first time we've watched it.
But we are planning on going back to all of them. I think, Daniel, I think for the most part, they will be happy because relationships are still the same. They had an overriding concern for security, especially with family issues, they get quite heated, whether it's divorce or child custody or even...
When y'all were putting that format together on the second floor, though, y'all were discussing it with them.
Yes, and what we did, we took all those meetings we had with them the first time, and it's the same relationships. The only difference is, in this plan from the last one, is before, we had courtrooms in four corners, and that was really, this one, by putting them lining up like this, we were able to save some space and save some money. So I think they will be comfortable with this. The other thing we can do is we're eliminating these needs for future share lists, because by doing this, we can create a ramp from here to there, and that'll come out at the judges' level, and that way, we won't need, we can comply with the ADA requirements and not have to provide a future lift. And again, these lifts are fifty to six thousand, fifty to sixty thousand dollars each, that's almost all six courtrooms, quarter of a million dollars. We didn't have to do it all at one time, but we had to provide provisions for them, which was going to cost some money.
It's possible. I missed what you were saying about the second floor, but basically, the only difference is that we lowered the size of one of the courtrooms.
That's right. And we did eliminate, we stuck, as you come up into here, we had, we have one elevator now that serves both the Sally Port and the secure elevator for the staff. As you come in here, these are the two holding rooms for the Chancery. We eliminated a stair, we eliminated Sally Port and a stair and an elevator, and that was probably almost half a million dollars in savings, what we felt. And that's where we're gaining some of these additional savings. Now, you know, if there's a need for another Sally Port, that's, we'll have to look at it, but...
I think that, my experience, at least weekly, I was in federal courts in Jackson where there was five courtrooms. Anything from someone shooting a coon at night on the natural trace to a murder or drugs, they all went through the same checkpoint. I never saw a line out to Capitol Street, and it worked fine. I think we're making more of a personal-type thing than a functional-type thing, and we have, I mean, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen million dollars is a lot of money. I'll be happy if we can do it for, I did the math, and maybe we could get it down to sixteen even. But to add additional Sally Ports and additional checkpoints for these people to come in and to just say, I'm separate as a Chancer from Justice, is, I'm telling you, it will work, it works in bigger venues than this, well.
Of course, what we're trying to do is meet the board's budget requirements and meet the requirements of making this thing.
And I think you've done very well.
I have a question though, on this end, I hear there's like a staircase there.
That's outside.
Yeah, that one right there.
That's on the bottom, isn't it?
No, that's top.
It comes from the top.
Is that for emergency access?
Yeah, we have to have that.
So that panic bar gets hit, alarm goes off, somebody tries to go down that way to keep people calm.
Right, neither one of these are public access, these are, because they have, otherwise, they'd be what's called a dead-end corridor. That's the only reason for those staircases there. They have to have it if there would be a fire or some... ...and talk to a couple of dirt contractors because of the site is so extensive, so we're still trying to get different ways, whether or not, what type of retaining wall you do. We think we know historically what's the most economical type of retaining wall, and one thing we try to do on the site is make, even though we've got more of them, reduce the height of these retaining walls. By doing that, we can go to what's called an articulated retaining wall instead of pouring-in-place concrete. The higher the wall, you have to go to reinforce con... The higher the wall, you have to go to reinforce concrete, which is more expensive, and so we're going through that study right now, but we want to make sure that we're not, you know, increasing the cost by doing that. But we do think, we're looking at, instead of what's called punch windows is our other, that you would see in a lot of traditional buildings, we're going more to curtain walls, which is a lot more glass, but it's less costly.
Looks good.
And we're going to have, we're going to have, yes, we are going to have to, as we did before, we're going to have to go back to the city and review, plan on reviewing that with them, just get their input, comments, but that's our track right now.
All right, to me, sounds good. Let's get through the users.
Yeah, I know that they're definitely looking forward to seeing the plans.
Yep.
We're going to try and set that up in the next two weeks, starting next week, although unfortunately, I've got to be out of town a lot next week, but we're going to try and get that going as fast as we can. In the meantime, we're going to still continue working on the elevations and moving. If the board is comfortable with this plan, we can still move forward with some of the basics of it.
We're very comfortable with this plan, and we want to make as few accommodations as possible.
And move along as fast as possible.
Any other comments?
I think Dale's got some people that might could even help with the-
Dirt work. We talked about that, and that's something we're going to investigate. The only potential issue there, and we've run into this before, is if you get a different, you know, if somebody does some of the dirt work and you get a contract on board, he starts pointing fingers, well, this wasn't in my bid, and that was, and that wasn't. But that's something we are going to sit down and review with them, what can be done. It may be that just moving some dirt around on the site is enough to save some substantial money there.
Well, I did the math at the three hundred, and I think we, you know, could do it for sixteen million, maybe just a touch under, if we could get Dale's-
Well, we're open to that.
Yeah, we're very open to it.
Yeah, and the only thing I just wanted to add to, I just want to be sure that we do take time to, you know, speak to Judge Grant, Judge Roberts, Judge McLaurin over there, and Jessica, to be sure that they're in the process of this going on, if there's cosmetic stuff that needs to be moved or something's just not right, just be sure we talk with them.
We'll do that. Mr. Swells and I've been-
I'd like to add, the other judge is really important also.
Yeah, thank you, Judge Sherrill, I appreciate that.
Mr. Swells has not been shy about giving comments on his department either, so I, again, I don't, we hadn't really changed the relationships, we've just rearranged them, so I think, for the most part, everybody's going to be satisfied.
Yep, I think so.
Thank y'all.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Want for you to step this up?
A couple hours?
No.
All right, come on.
Ready for item B?
Yeah.
The next item under my section, guys, is a discussion of a petition that's been received. These are the interested persons for inclusion of their parcels of real property within an area that encompasses the Reservoir Fire Protection District. This is under a particular code section that authorizes the expansion, it's referred to as an annexation of a fire protection district, adding additional area. We've received that petition from an appropriate number of citizens, at least twenty-five, who live within the proposed area to be added. What we, the steps of the process now is, we received the petition. What we need to first do is to have the petition verified, we need to make sure that the folks that have signed the petition actually live in the area that's proposed to be added, and that they are, in fact, qualified electors under the statute. How we do that is, we acknowledge, receive the petition, that's what you're doing, we authorize the county administrator to send that petition down to Becky Boyd, our circuit clerk, and she will verify those signatures for us and get it back to us. When we get that back, the next step would be for us then to pass an intent resolution to expand the district that gets published in the newspaper, a hearing is set, and-
I'm just making myself available, what can I do?
Okay. And-
So I'm just curious, did you include Barnet Bin?
All right, okay, we get it. Okay. Well, I lost my train of thought, I apologize.
You're talking about validating the signature.
Yeah, we validate the signatures first, that's our first step, then later, at a later hearing, a meeting, you guys will then set a public hearing, we'll get it published, have an opportunity for folks to come and to speak on the issue of the expansion of that district. If everything goes well, you'll expand the district through a resolution, and that gets pushed back out to the actual fire protection district, and they make the required notifications then to the state, rating bureau, and other places to get it handled. So I just wanted to make you aware, all you're doing today is authorizing Ms. Laura to send the petition, you're acknowledging, receiving the petition, sending it down to Ms. Becky for verification.
Do you have a motion for that?
Nope, next item.
No, I do need a motion to authorize Ms. Laura.
You're getting ahead of us.
It says discussion.
Authority of county administrator to have circuit clerk verify petition signatories.
Oh, that's the second sentence.
That's the second sentence. Got to read all the way to the end, Jay.
Motion by Mr. Cross to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Harri, discussion, all of us say aye. Oppose, eyes have it.
Next item under the agenda that has to do with our multipurpose arena fence project. The board previously authorized a landscape architect to help us with the design or the specifications related to the actual fence itself. Since that time, we had a pre-bid conference with bidders. We actually received the bids coming up on the seventh. In the interim, we had a number of questions from interested bidders that were beyond the purview of any of your staff to be able to answer. We asked Mr. Gibson, our architect, to step in and render assistance. We need to pay him for his time. He has offered to continue to help us with the bid project at two hundred dollars an hour, which is his standard rate, not to exceed twelve and a half hours of time, it's a total of twenty-five hundred dollars. That's what's being asked of you. We anticipate, he's used two hours, we anticipate that we need him for a couple of more hours. We're not going to get that far into what we authorize on his time, but we need some more time of his to be able to actually help us work through the bids that we receive, make sure we're comparing apples to apples.
Well, what was different, that some of them had questions because their bids were different?
It had to do-
They didn't compare, start out bidding the same?
Sir.
They didn't, I mean, they didn't have the same specs to bid on?
As it turns out, a lot of the questions had to do with the actual gating itself, Jared. We didn't actually give them a specific design on the gate. They could do a swing gate, they could do a rolling gate, and that type, like cantilever type gate. We needed him to step in and give technical responses on the gating mechanisms and which was best.
Well, we, that was the way we left it anyway, was let them tell you what kind of gate they were going to provide.
Correct.
No, we actually put in what kind of gate we want, but the problem is, it was going to get too detailed, so now, we're just going to go all mechanical, and then afterwards, we're going to come back and select a vendor to put the gates in.
We talked to them about doing, giving us their design.
We talked to the architect, did, yeah.
Yeah.
But anyway, just to make it easier, this is the bit easiest solution for us to go-
We also got into the issue of supplying power for the purpose of it being electronic, digital access, and so the project just went warp speed beyond what we were capable of being able to assess at that point. So we dialed it back and said, let's look at just mechanical, and let's go with a specified type of swinging manually controlled gate that would allow us to be able to compare apples to apples. When they start, when they come back with their bids, we need assistance actually looking at what they have spec'd on the fence product itself.
Right.
And that's beyond our ability.
I made a motion to approve your request.
Motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison, any other discussion? All of us say aye. Oppose, eyes have it.
Next item under my section is the discussion of the drainage issues at Fox Bay subdivision, District Two. Mr. Cross and I have had a number of conversations about this, we've talked to the constituents. You guys will recall that we had a visitation here, public comment, where a resident and a representative of the homeowners association in Fox Bay discussed with you a drainage issue, a sinkhole that formed immediately adjacent to a house out there at Fox Bay. What we normally do in situations where it comes to our attention that we've got a sinkhole that's related to some sort of drainage infrastructure, is, number one, try to determine whether or not it is actually publicly maintained to begin with. Obviously, if it's public, we can deal with that. If it's not readily apparent that it's public or not, I do some research and looking at it. In this case, where this sinkhole formed is above a private easement, private drainage easement that was retained by the developer of Fox Bay. So the sinkhole is on private property. What we do when that happens is, Mr. Buster, myself, and Mr. Dale will go together, and we will review that situation to determine, is it in close proximity to publicly owned infrastructure? In other words, is the publicly maintained section of our property being jeopardized by the presence of this drainage problem? If it's close enough in proximity, we visit with you guys about going ahead, declaring that it is, in fact, jeopardizing our public infrastructure, which authorizes us to get on private property and tend to it before it impacts us, okay? That's how the law is set up. It's all AG work, it's all under the statute, there's no case law on any of this stuff, it's a lot of gray area. We went and visited this particular section, we took measurements of where the sinkhole is in relation to the back of the curb where the inlet is. It's over fifty feet. It is clearly owned and associated with private property. It is not jeopardizing any publicly owned infrastructure. If we put public equipment on this site and try to tend to it, there will be a lot of questions as to why we're in that man's yard up next to his house doing work with county equipment. We cannot do it. We've relayed that information back to the HOA rep and to the homeowner, we did it in writing, we've corresponded with their attorney that they got involved, and as badly as they would like assistance, we simply cannot render it. So the question was put, can we go ahead and just get it on the record, why we have made the recommendation to you guys that the board cannot address this request? And that's what we're doing today, this is just discussion. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Not on this one, but how would that relate to Jay's issue?
I mean, I know they're two different- It's the exact same thing.
Okay.
Same thing. Yeah, just different area, different subdivision.
Copy that letter and send it to Jay.
Yes, sir. I think Mr. Bishop's very familiar with that.
I appreciate all the support I get around here, right? Yeah.
Okay. All right, so there's no action needed on item D. Item E is the consideration of and potential action to adopt a resolution of support of Senate Bill 2590. That's awfully cryptic. 2590 is a bill that's been dropped in the Senate to-
Motion to approve.
What is 2590?
Expansion of qualified resort status for the reservoir community district.
I make motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any other discussion? All of us say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Eyes have it. All right. Ms. Laura.
Oh, I'm on your side, sorry.
Thank you. First item under my section today is Chase Bryan and Steve Case with Ceasefire, and this is on the fiber to home project and the franchise agreement. So I'm going to let Mr. Slay start that out.
Just thought you could sit down.
That's right.
Mr., the Ceasefire representatives can start making their way forward to the extent that they want to discuss anything with you guys. Quickly, a quick summation, many, many months ago, Jay, help me, approaching a year ago, we started down the road of trying to work out a franchise agreement with Ceasefire on their fiber to home project, made a visit out to Ceasefire's headquarters, if you recall, and discussed it with them, put together a draft proposal of the franchise agreement, made a couple of just minor adjustments here and there, don't have any material effect at all, and brought it to the board with the understanding that it would be put into place, that this was the franchise agreement that's being offered. The questions that were raised by the prior board, one of the questions was, how do we know or can we be sure that we're being treated similarly or the same as other counties with respect to this proposed franchise agreement from Ceasefire? Well, in this particular case, there's only one other county at this time in, say, Mississippi, that I'm aware of, that has a franchise agreement in place with Ceasefire, and that's Madison County. And so the question was asked, can we make sure we get something out of Ceasefire that says, you're being given the same agreement that Madison County has? So we went back and said, the board has approved the franchise agreement with one contingency. We need a letter, we need something from Ceasefire committing that this document is identical in all material respects to Madison County's franchise agreement. There was no response for some period of time. Other inquiries were made, where are we on this? Eventually, I was routed to and made contact with Ceasefire's in-house legal counsel. And the discussion was, you know, you're looking for some very specific lawyered language about it being identical to the Madison County agreement, and obviously, if you make an agreement with one county versus another, you're going to have some differences. We're not Madison County, so you have to change that to Rankin County, that's obvious. And so we reached an agreement that it would be identical in all material respects, which is fine with me. And so, sent it back and said, yes, sir, we're ready to go. Get your letter together and get it to me. And that was several weeks ago, and got no contact, and so I inquired again, where are we? Boards wanted to ask questions about this, and was told, well, that franchise agreement no longer applies. We're going to, we're changing our franchise agreement. So you don't need a letter.
I'm not lying to people telling me we already under agreement.
So that basically was where things got left. We'll be in touch when we have our revised franchise agreement together, and we'll come back and talk to you about it. So in the meantime, we had an opportunity to visit the issue about a permit that they were needing for access to right of way, and you guys decided maybe the thing to do would be to inquire, before we grant the permit, to inquire, where do we stand on this franchise agreement? And that's where we are today.
So we stay right where we're at.
Well, here they are. They're going to tell us, what are we going to do to make this go forward? Because the last time, how we got you here was, we had to hold up the same situation, keep you from being able to do work here. And then I thought, I've been lying to people, telling them, we've already signed an agreement, we're part of it, ready to go, and now we're not. How long's it going to take us to make that happen?
Yeah, sure, so-
Before Mr. McBride speaks, let me clarify one other thing today. On the basis of Mr. McBride, this is the legal counsel, on the basis of Mr. McBride's communication to me, that with the revision to the letter that puts in all material respects in the letter, with that revision, then everything is ready to go, on the basis of that representation, I told this board on February the 12th that we were ready to go. And so, just to clarify, Jay's saying to his constituency, everything is handled, is well taken, because as of February 12th, everything was ready to go. Franchise agreement as it exists, ready to sign, contingency approved, we were ready to go. Okay, so just make sure that Mr. Bishop does not believe that he spoke out of turn, he spoke in turn.
Well, I'm wrong a lot, so, yeah.
Well, let me introduce myself. I met everybody officially. I'm Chase Bryan. I am here today representing Ceasefire and the manager of market development for our fiber to the home project. To kind of level set for you, our franchise agreement, and to what Mr. Slay said, our franchise agreement is simply, as far as our fiber to the home residential project, is a prerequisite for that project. It is a, obviously, it gives us things like right of way access and all, from a legal standpoint, to even consider coming into a community and launching our residential fiber to the home project, like you've seen probably in other cities and municipalities in the metro area. So it is not one in the same as us launching our residential fiber to the home project in a city. What I mean by that is, we have to have that document in place, obviously, to move forward, and then there's a whole separate campaign of putting forth a marketing plan, a press plan, all these types of things to launch, quote unquote, a fiber city, a gig city, to then open up, for example, under our current model, pre-registration for the service by different neighborhoods, cutting up the different neighborhoods or adjoining neighborhoods into what we call fiber hoods, and basically penciling out how the county, in your case, could then qualify for the service in those individual neighborhoods. So those two are, while they're under the same umbrella of the project, one, the franchise agreement is simply a prerequisite for that, to even be a consideration. So by executing the agreement, it's not saying that, in fact, the agreement explicitly states that it does not obligate us to build, you know, residential fiber to the home in the area. It simply is that legal document we have to have in place for things like right of way and all. So having said that, just again, to level set for you, we'd be happy to move forward with the agreement, our standard franchise agreement, which was brought to you, from my understanding, for approval and the letter that was requested. However, Mr. Slay was correct, recently, we're, you know, we're a diversified technology company. That product itself, let alone all of our suite of residential products, are changing- That product itself, let alone all of our suite of residential products, are changing weekly. So there are things in that agreement that simply wouldn't apply any longer, or that need to be updated to allow us to bring, whether it be that product or similar products, to your residents. So all that to say that, yes, we are in the current process of updating our franchise agreement for multiple reasons, the main of which is to simply address certain things in that agreement that would no longer apply, or that must be added to the agreement to work for our product to be rolled out in the future. So to go back again, if we move forward, we just felt it would be disingenuous if we moved forward and executed the, our current standard franchise agreement and agreed to that letter, because even though we would then put that franchise agreement in place, that is not a franchise agreement that Ceasefire could then commit to building out residential fiber-to-the-home under. So in other words, things like, you know, pole attachments, or all these things that are mentioned in that franchise agreement, all are constantly being changed and addressed.
We want you guys to be able to carry fiber in our county, so as soon as we can get this accomplished, the better off we're all gonna be.
Sure.
So let's make it happen.
I don't know whether Mr. Bryan is in a position to answer the question, but I'd like to know, in light of the fact that the existing franchise, the existing standard franchise agreement is being revised, do you have any information as to when Madison County is going to sign their new standard franchise agreement?
Sure, I figured you'd wanna know that. That is, and the general counsel you've spoken with, they are working on that at the moment. I couldn't give you a firm timeline. If I had to give you a rough estimate, it would be about a month from now, is when that document would be fully, you know, changed, reviewed, and complete to be able to present back to you.
What sort of, well, I'm not in, my question is Madison County's. When is Madison County going to be presented with a revised franchise agreement that fits in with your new rollout of offerings?
So Madison County executed, had already executed our former agreement before any of the, you know, and unfortunately, I can't give you specifics, but before any of our products were under consideration to change and things of that nature. I can tell you that if our products change in such a way, and the rollout of those products change in such a way that we'd have to go back to previous markets and change that agreement, it would be much in the same way. Today, in the instance of Madison County, they were launched some months ago, you've got areas within Madison County neighborhoods that we dictated as fiber hoods, they're publicly on our website, we had a press release and all these things to launch those areas, and their residents are signing up for service as we speak. And once enough of them do, then we commit to building out that area, and that's also outlined in the agreement.
Well, if the product mix is not going to jeopardize the efficacy of the Madison County agreement, such that they're not gonna have to sign a revised agreement, tell me why, as of today, it wouldn't be appropriate for Rankin County to go right ahead, right now, and sign the same standard agreement that Madison County has, along with a letter from your legal counsel that says it is materially in all respects the same? But why couldn't we just do that? Your product mix fits that franchise agreement.
We can. However, that, as it stands today, because of the timing of how this project works, like I said, the agreement would simply be in place from a legal standpoint to establish, okay, we have those specific right-aways that are outlined in that agreement. By the time an area qualified, or by the time we actually rolled out, or decided to then build, or launch Rankin County as a quote-unquote "gig city" fiber community, that, you know, those terms would no longer apply.
Okay, so what are y'all gonna do, what are y'all gonna do with Madison County when they have fiber hoods that are ready to roll out?
They would qualify under our current franchise agreement that's already been executed.
Okay, so we're still going around in a circle here. Tell me again, why it wouldn't work exactly the same for Rankin County? If we executed that franchise agreement that y'all presented to us and said, this is what we would like to get signed, and you have me a letter from your legal counsel or somebody that's high enough up in Ceasefire food chain to satisfy us, that it is in all material respects identical to Madison County's, why can Rankin County not be treated exactly like you're gonna treat Madison County for the purposes of this program?
Sure. So we've already rolled out, again, the business rules and the marketing aspect of our program with, we've moved forward in actually putting out Madison County as a quote-unquote "fiber community", and letting their residents pre-register for the service and all that. So you've got some neighborhoods out there that are actually about to qualify, they're very close. You've got one, Ashbrook, for example, I think's, you know, 60 some odd homes away. So as soon as they qualify, they would be built out under our current products with the, that comply with the current franchise agreement that's in place. Should we ever launch something that would require a different build-out, a different products, suite of products, a different method, we would. We would have to go back and address that in the franchise agreement.
I see no reason why we couldn't do the exact same thing for Rankin County.
As we know for certain, if and when we did launch Rankin County, it would be different. And that's what we're addressing now.
I understand. And it seems to me that the question that we would have then is, what is going to be provided to Madison County under the present arrangement that would not be provided to Rankin County because Rankin County would not be a signatory on the existing standard franchise agreement?
Yeah, it's not that anything's being provided to Madison County, it's simply the terms of the agreement as far as right-aways and things of that nature, of what is needed for our construction purposes.
Right. You understand, you understand our board's hesitation, it seems, it seems to me problematic that you're going to have to have Madison County change some things eventually, but it wouldn't work the same for us. That's, we're being treated differently than Madison County, which was the concern that we had to begin with.
We don't know today that things would change for Madison County. They have been launched, they're, everything has been executed, they've been, we've decided to go and launch them as a, again, a gig community, a fiber community. This actually, unfortunately, and it may be miscommunication on my part, and I apologize, but the new terms of our agreement would actually help bring new technologies if and when we ever did launch in Rankin County. What I'm talking about would help bring even newer technologies. So that's why we would require a new agreement that would outline our ability to do that.
Right. And naturally, Madison County would want to have that same access to those new technologies.
They may. I'll leave that up to our general counsel.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest, maybe what we need to know is whether Madison County is ready to enter their new franchise agreement. We'd get all squared back up, just depending on what they do with Madison County, it seems to me. Let Madison County sign the new agreement? Send us a letter that the same, the one that we're being asked to sign is materially the same as Madison's new agreement? And we can consider that new agreement? That seems like maybe it's a solution. But if Madison County's gonna continue to operate under the existing franchise agreement, what the prior board did, and what I assume this board will want to do, is to confirm that Rankin County is being treated identically to Madison County by this company that resides and has a building in Madison County.
Right. At least, we are a bigger marketplace than Madison County.
I just think that's appropriate and fair. We wanna be treated the same.
The way it looks right now, we're just, we've kinda been hung out there until you decide how Madison County's gonna do theirs.
No, sir, that's not the case.
That's just, that's just the way it sounds.
Yeah, no, it simply comes down to, we have an evolving technology, an evolving product, and that requires us to update our franchise agreement.
But that's gonna be evolving from now on.
Correct.
I mean, so you could make this argument today, in six months, in a year, in five years, it's always...
Right, but that new agreement, once it's executed, it works both ways.
When it's executed?
Let's do it today, and then it'll be evolving.
We can do that, and I've been advised that we can do that. However, it would be, it would be disingenuous...
Let's do it.
I want to be clear, and that was my very opening statement, that's what I wanna be clear about, is it would be pretty disingenuous for us to execute that agreement, and then knowing from a business standpoint, if we change products, that would prevent us from being able to bring those products to this community.
It's not gonna prevent you from bringing those products to Madison, you just said.
It would, it would.
But you could later...
We're rolling out our existing fiber-to-the-home project in Madison, Jackson, Madison County, those places.
But before you bring out those other technologies, you could have a sign and addendum, could you not?
Unfortunately, I would, I would think at that point, that would cause, we would have communities that have qualified, your residents would have qualified for the service and be waiting on it, but they wouldn't be able to get it until that was executed. So we're just simply trying to get, you know, an updated franchise agreement executed.
Is it a secret as to what kind of technologies you're talking about?
There is some proprietary knowledge, yes, regarding to the products.
One thing I'm thinking of right now that our people are concerned with is data, phone, and television.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, this is all relevant to that, yes.
So if we can sign a contract today to get us data, phone, and television, I'm ready to do it, and let's get going.
Well, so, okay, so again, I just want to be clear, if we execute that agreement, that would be great. We can do that. We can sign the letter, that's what we told Mr. Slay as well. However, those, that is not one in the same as us actually then rolling out, there's nothing in that agreement that says we're now gonna build fiber and bring residential fiber-to-the-home to Rankin County.
But we get to start the whole process then of marketing, getting everyone, all board.
Well, that, no, that's what we're trying to be clear on, is that, by executing that agreement, we could not and would not launch Rankin County as a quote "fiber community" under that agreement. We would need our upgraded...
You told us you did it in Madison.
We did, that's been executed. These are things that are changing.
Let me back up my first question then. How long is it gonna take to get everything here where we need, so we can get this going?
Right.
A new drafted franchise agreement? About a month.
A month, okay.
So we expect a month.
So in one month, we'll see you here, I hope.
We...
Or at your office.
I'll seek other avenues.
There is no other avenues.
There can be.
It's not.
Doc, is that ready to roll?
Well...
Let's move on.
Yeah. You're a satellite dish.
And Steve is here, Steve is here with me today to address, I don't know if we're bringing up the, you know, the permit issue has been brought up in relation to this.
Yeah, well, we're gonna hold our permits until a month, or you're not getting permits done until we get this accomplished.
Okay, I'll take that back.
Aye.
You'll be ready to go, and we will be too.
Just to round the circle out, legal counsel has already shot across the bow that our activity in holding up the permit is a violation of federal law. So you can, I'm encouraging you guys to understand, I've looked at that issue, this board has the ability to assess and determine the legitimacy of any request for right-of-way access. As far as I'm concerned, we need some additional time to continue looking at their requests for permits.
Aye.
And we'll get to it. Best of luck to Ceasefire to move through the federal court system within a 30-day timeframe anyway.
It goes real quick, about five years.
And I just think at this point, there's a couple of things I wanna clarify, number one...
We want this badly, so, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
To protect myself here, I wanna clarify something. Your legal counsel was not advised that the current on-the-table franchise agreement, not this revision, was still on the table for execution. I was not advised that. I was told, it's off the table because we're doing a new franchise agreement. That's number one, alright? Number two, I am still waiting for an answer as to why we can do everything in the world for Madison under the existing franchise agreement, but we can't for us.
Well, I think he just answered, we can do it, but we're just not gonna be advertising for it. They're not gonna publish it that we're out here.
Right.
So we'll be dead.
Hopefully, hopefully that will stop the assertions that are being made that the problem rests with the board supervisors.
Okay. And that's all we wanted to clarify, is that we could execute that, but we feel it would be disingenuous because we couldn't then actually roll out our residential fiber-to-the-home project.
We'll tell everybody in 30 days, we'll be ready to do a contract.
We hope.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You ready?
Laura, you did good.
Next item I have is approval to renew the workers' compensation with Liberty Mutual through Wellington Associates for the volunteer fire and the volunteer fire protection district in the amount of $140,145 in authority to issue that check. That insurance does renew the first.
Motion on that?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morris, any discussion? All the way say aye? Ayes aye.
The next thing I have for you before we have additional items is the review of the agendas for Monday.
I'm good with it.
I'm good, let's move on.
Yes, I can look later, that's fine, aye?
Okay, the, additional items. Additional items, the first item is the March 22nd Rankin Youth Leadership Local Government Day, I believe Jay, you wanted to talk about that.
Carolyn Butler asked, they have youth leadership, and they wanna come by and ask the supervisors in each district what they do.
That'd be tough for you, isn't it?
I don't think that's gonna be, you know... Instead, instead I volunteer Bob to be the only one to come.
I have talked to Mandy Arndt, and we're working it out, and I asked her how many of the districts should be involved, so I would know who to...
Oh, we're not gonna be violating any open means laws, as long as we're just discussing with kids.
You're not incorporating any of the things.
Yeah, okay.
This is an educational experience.
Yeah, okay, so...
Yeah, but I'm just, just to kinda coordinate with y'all, when to come and what to do and that kinda thing.
Well, just make sure you put it on our calendar, our plan in advance, for the 22nd.
Yeah, I got it.
Is it the day we're all working on this?
Good, I've got it.
Wait, where?
If y'all need pointers on what we do, just ask me.
Alright, let's go.
Next item?
Yeah.
The next is the discussion of the Rankin County Health Department water bill. I had received an email from Jonathan Chaney stating that they had a past due balance on their bill, that they, the city of Pearl had not billed them for approximately two years or so, and the health department was gonna pay the water bill. They had a past due balance that they needed to clear up and ask our assistance in it. Well, while I was out, they gotta discontinue, they were gonna cut their services off. And so I told Janice, I said, go ahead and let's pay the bill, we can't have the health department's water cut off, and then we'll, we'll see about the situation. He has said that they have no problem with us taking it out of the allocations that we give them, to recoup our money on it. We pay them $18,312 a month, the water bill was $2374, so we can take it out of one month's allocation, and, and clear it up if the board's okay with that.
So move.
What?
Second.
I had asked Maria to do it, it was $2,600 actually.
It's 20, we have the actual statement, $237483. They sent an actual statement.
Okay. So why, with the health department, even shape they are, and having to lay off people, why couldn't we just pay that and...
That's why I'm bringing, this is a board decision, he just said if we needed to, he said...
They are literally cutting staff left and right.
Officer in the courthouse.
Yeah.
Well, if they need, they can come to us, so.
But the problem is, the problem is, we built this building down there, and the health of Pearl never sent them a bill, ever, and it's been like five years, and so they decided just to come up with some arbitrary number to give to them, and a cutoff notice at the same time. So I just told them, we could help them with it, and...
That's y'all's decision.
But we have other issues with the health department we need to address, we got some major problems we're about to run into, they're moving everybody out of here, environmentalists, it's gonna be a big headache with our building department on getting building permits done. So somebody needs to talk to...
She's talking to him.
I tried to talk to Phil. I called yesterday, no less than seven times, to the contact numbers that I have on the letter that they sent to us, and got a busy signal. So I tried the 800 number and got connected and got a busy signal. I called Renee, and they had left a two-page flyer for them up there telling people how to get in touch with them. For the wastewater, there is a website to go to. I went to it, you can pull the permits down, it could be complicated for some people that aren't real familiar with doing this, to be able to navigate through to get them down. And then they also gave some numbers to call. So right now, what I did for just right now is, I gave these two pages to the girls in the front, because they had had several calls coming in, and to give them this information for right now, because that's all we have, until I can get to somebody to talk to, to see what we're gonna do. I believe Renee said that she had a lady that had called, gotten somebody, she's already paid her $50, and they told her, they spoke so fast, she couldn't understand them, and they said she had to pay $125.
So whether if we offer them office space here or not, are they being forced to go home?
I take it from the letter that I've got, it didn't state that they were not gonna have anybody up here, so I thought maybe it was a reduced staff, but apparently now, they are, and they're going to be working from their homes with laptops. It's all gonna be, either driven...
I can understand if they were like going from a rented facility where they were having to pay rent for, but this is...
No, we charge them nothing.
This isn't our facility, they don't, we don't charge them anything for being there, And if they stay, it's gonna make our citizens' life a lot easier.
I agree, but from what I'm understanding, it's not the option. I mean, I don't know what.
So if we can give our, those people an option of staying, would y'all be okay with them staying in their office?
Most certainly.
Okay.
I mean, they're there anyway.
Okay, all right. Okay.
But anyway, that's just the update on that. So the only, the only thing we need to know now is if y'all want to recoup this money from the health department or not on the water bill. If you're fine with it, then it already has been handled. It's up to y'all.
I don't care. You already said, they said they'll pay it, they'll pay it, I guess, so.
He, in an email to me, he did say that they would take, we could take it out of their allocations.
Motion by Mr. Morrow to suck their money dry. Second by who?
Gaines.
Gaines, second by Gaines, yeah. Any other discussion? All of you say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Okay, that's to add.
Oh, that was to add, all right. Now you actually make the motion to do it.
That was added to the agenda.
Yeah.
You gonna make the motion to do it?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All of you say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you. The next item I have is on a discussion of the transfer court sound system. When we have got our third chancellor, which they are located in the lower level in the, our transfer court building, he said that there, the sound system, there is no sound system. So therefore, the court reporters are having a very difficult time. I talked with him, we got one quote on it and because it's over five thousand dollars, we're getting a second. Bridget's having a hard time getting them to quote, so we're on the same thing. He provided, the judge provided me with a quote, it is also over around seventy-five hundred dollars. This would be for a portable, it will not be, no, this would be a wireless system that when we're through with that building, we could move it somewhere else.
Yeah.
Um, so if y'all would authorize me, if this is where y'all wanna go, if you would authorize me today to accept the lowest quote when we get it and move on this project?
So just having, just having a boombox and a mic wouldn't work. Cause Brian got one.
A bullhorn, that won't work either. I make a motion, we do, we authorize Laura to go ahead with this and get that.
All right. Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Miss Cross. I knew it at that time.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All of you say aye?
Not approved. That's added.
Motion by Mr. Gaines to add, second by Miss Cross to second him. And then discussion, all of you say aye? We're good.
Okay.
All right, the next item I have is, um.
I'm running out of gas.
Discussion of potential action on a P E V that was sent without a purchase order. And I have Rusty here, if y'all need to know anything, just basically, we had a, we had told the E S N S and we had told the election commissioners that we had to get purchase orders. They failed to get one, we have an outstanding bill for eighty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents on an item.
Eighty-seven dollars?
Yes, and twenty-five cents to be paid that has no purchase order. Which, it doesn't matter if it's two dollars, it's a violation, you know, with the purchase.
I make a motion.
Second.
Add to the agenda and then negotiate we pay it.
Why didn't you just put add and action on all these?
I'm sorry, I just didn't.
All right.
All right.
Motion to add this item to the agenda by Mr. Morrison, second by, or Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. All of you say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion approved by Mr. Mar, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All of you say aye? Ayes have it.
I was just trying to make your life difficult, Jay.
I know that.
Looking official.
Uh, the next item I have, and we can add this to Monday agenda, we won't have to do anything here today, is just discussion, oh, we've got potential action on this one of part-time temporary help for IT department. I'm gonna let Rusty explain what he needs there.
Yeah, let's wait for Monday.
Let's hit the high points.
Basically, I'm just thinking of somebody for three to four weeks in the afternoons to help us straighten up our salvage room and, and our storage room. It's gotten to be a disaster area and it's only getting worse.
Well, man, we need to hire someone to take care of doing our website, so.
He has a new employee, I don't know how that would fit into it. That's just replacing one that he already has, that's replacing.
He may not be qualified to be doing that.
Clean it up, anybody can clean up.
What are you talking about, pay him, Rusty? I mean, what?
I was thinking minimum wage.
Maybe that would be somebody.
Prison inmates can't help with, or is that get out of?
If that's what y'all wanna do, we can do that as well.
What about, what about some of the, yeah, inmates here or ladies?
I got, I haven't, I haven't worked in the work like six to two right now. So showing the jail, I finally have somebody to work, working to six or seven, so yeah, in the afternoons, I could send just four, five girls up there.
It's gonna, it's probably gonna need to be some gentlemen with some backs. There's some, and that's how, well, yes, my apologies. Somebody's gonna have to be able to lift about twenty-five, fifty pounds.
Oh, God.
I know.
Ain't telling her that one.
Is that what we wanna do though? We can do that though?
Okay, we'll skip over that one. The next is a discussion of the Alpha pager server. And I have Bob here for that. We have a quote here for a new server for the paging system at seven thousand nine hundred dollars and repairing the existing one for two thousand nine hundred dollars.
What are you gonna do with the second one? Where are you gonna be located?
It's just gonna, same location, just for.
Sit side by side.
We just spent three thousand repairing the one that we're gonna spend almost three thousand repairing again.
Just to give y'all a little background, this was put in before we had the capability to do the paging on the radio. Rusty and Marty, I think, have exhausted pretty much every viable option that would be financially feasible to bring to y'all. And this is the cheapest we can get.
Rusty, can you not just buy a server and, and put this application on?
So I'm, let me, let me kinda give you a high level as well. And Mr. Rayburn may, may need to join in here too. The problem is, is that that's proprietary software and proprietary hardware that needs to run on that thing. And the bad part about it is, there's one gentleman in the entire country that can support it and he works from his house. So when we buy this, if we go, if we go this route, um, then we have to go with their specs, their software, everything they suggest.
What if we change systems?
Um, that's one of the suggestions we've been kinda trying to figure out. Because all of our systems for, for dispatching the texts and stuff aren't really working. Dispatch currently has four places they have to enter in a call. Sometimes it doesn't go out, sometimes it does for both Alpha paging and P T S paging.
Well, I know whenever our paging system was down and we were doing our, our texting over the phone, man, that worked like a champ. Uh, at least I think it did.
Sometimes it does.
Sometimes it does, sometimes it does.
Whenever we was doing it through Jackson. But, um, I know we spent a bunch of money buying this system, about three hundred and something thousand dollars buying these paging systems. Not to mention all the other towers we had to go add more antennas to in Jerrys District.
One tower.
And maybe up in Steves too.
That's because we, fortunately, unfortunately, we live in the rural, most rural areas.
Yeah.
We are still.
What is this we're looking at here? What is this we're looking at?
Mr. Rayburn? Yeah, so this is the three steps that we go through. Every time we get a nine-one-one call for any type of fire service or medical service, we have to complete three steps in order to alert all the volunteer firemen or people, the field responders. We currently use the CAD text program that's built into the CAD, the computer-aided dispatch program that we use at the sheriff's department. This requires us to take information from the call that we get and send out over a server for email and text. That poses, that causes a lot of problems with that. It doesn't work right all the time, but that's the, one of the steps we've had in place. And basically, we do that, then we'll turn around and do the send a page, the Alpha pager.
Yeah.
This, the system's been down for a week. When it's up and running, it's, it realistically, it fails maybe once or twice a week, Rusty, would you say? About accurate? Once or twice a week it fails. And we're not talking about something that's, that we can get by without. Um, we're piecing three steps together to have one semi-dependable way.
It's been down a week, how are we notifying people?
We're just depending on the other two steps.
Okay, the first one you mean, the.
The other is the, the current radio program that we use. We, if you guys remember, and a lot of you probably are familiar with the old tone pagers, when we would send down the tones to, and the fire pagers would go off. When we got rid of those, now we're using the radio system. The radios that we have do that. Um, but the problem is, I think, the cost for the radios, there's not enough radios to go around.
No, no, we got radios now. Let's back up.
That, that was my understanding that, that not everybody had, had radios and that's, that's why we had to do this.
Batteries may be an issue, but they got, they got radios.
Up until this point, that's been my understanding that we didn't have enough radios for everybody and so they wouldn't know. The volunteer fire.
They all got radios.
Everybody's got.
Even to this point, that's, that's been my understanding. We hadn't got enough radios.
We bought radios for everybody.
Some of the ones that have bought their own radio.
Now, the ones for the volunteers do paging also?
Yes.
They do?
Yeah, I have the basic ability, but understand this. You know, you're gonna get some, some feedback both ways, that's why we want to bring it up to the board. They don't always have those radios with them. You know, and that's, when we, when we started the Alpha paging, this capability on the radios did not exist either. So you're coming in from the, from the back end because that ability on those pagers did not exist on, on those radios. That's why we were swapping paging systems.
Well, Jackson kinda dropped the bomb on us, but he goes, that sure does, this is gonna work.
And to my.
The paging does.
To my knowledge, on the radios, it works fine. Again, up until this point.
I'm talking about the Alpha pagers.
Oh, yeah.
The Alpha pagers has always been, hit me, as we've had pagers, you know, from the.
It never worked, Jay.
You know, from the.
Alpha, the Alpha pagers are bad. Connections to, I mean, it's just.
I mean, we upgraded our Alpha pagers, what, three, four years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I mean, that, that, you know, the problem is, it's not always with, you know, equipment. It's, you know, and I don't know if Rusty making him, it's the connectivity from site to site or from pager to pager and, and, you know, sometimes it gets.
So do we have a solution?
Am I being asked my honest opinion?
I'm asking you, yeah.
I see no need for the Alpha pager. I see no need for the CAD text paging. If the radio pager works, that is, that's more than we had than what we had with the old tone pagers. If it's working, that's what we need to go with. That's a one-step process. Everybody finds out in real time exactly as we're putting it out. It's gonna require them some inconvenience is to have their radio with them. If, I mean, but that's the same thing with the fire pagers.
But they can buy a separate charger for their batteries and keep a battery hot swap in there, so.
You can expect some, some pushback.
Right. Well, Bob, what do you think?
Well, I can tell you from a functionality point, I'm gonna have to agree with Rayburn, but it's the same system that's used in every municipal department, the same system that, you know, the sheriff's office uses, you know, you've got one line. Now, is there a possibility that that quits or we have a breakdown? Yeah?
Here's, here's my only problem with requiring those volunteer guys to carry portables with them. It's gonna become an inconvenience.
It is.
They're gonna stop carrying the radios with them all the time. And then your call response is gonna go down.
It is.
So I mean, the, I'm not saying the pager system is good, cause I don't like the pager system, this pager system we've got now, but something simple, the text thing can work. But having to, having to carry a portable with you everywhere you seem, every go is a burden to the volunteers and I don't wanna put that on.
And I can tell you this, and we've, we've looked at, um, and, and thought about it and looked at alternatives. But when you start getting into, you know, there's apps out there that you can put on the phone. But the question is, you know, at, at what point is it cost-effective for the county? Because if we get a new volunteer on, you know, are we gonna support, you know?
Here's the one thing, Alex, you just go out and do some research and figure out some possible options. Bring us three or four options on the table on Monday.
We've looked at them.
We, we have, we have.
They are quite expensive, a lot more expensive than, you know, getting the.
From what I remember, the last one, it sounded really good where it would just send text to all phones. But it was by user and it was pretty hefty.
The, the problem is, it's not, Rusty, the problem is helping out on this. When you're, when you're talking about sending your messages out, if we've got multiple messages, the pipeline that, that sends those messages out has to be so big. And the more messages that are getting caught up in that pipeline, the more messages you get caught up. And it, we're not gonna be a singular user.
Correct.
Is that correct? I mean, we're not gonna be deep user for a system. In other words, we're gonna be one of several clients. And if the system, the pipeline can't hold our messages, it may be, and that's what's caught up now. It gets caught up in cyberspace out there.
Basically, yeah, just ceasefire and Verizon and A T and T and all of them, they, they see our CAD texts going to two-hundred people as spam. So they'll stop it, hold it. They can hold it all day, we can't, we can't control that. They decide to send it when they're ready. So some people have reported not getting messages ever, some have reported getting them two days later. And all the research I've found, everybody, every company disclaimed everything with this should not be used as your primary form of communication for emergencies.
Talking about text messaging?
That's correct.
Um, let me grab something. Motorola does make a pager, Ron. It's no have.
We asked in the meeting, now I do have a, some information and I'll have to look at. I was under the impression that was Motorola, it's not. It is a pager that, from my understanding, it will work.
Right. But it's not mine. It's more expensive than maybe, they, you know, the, might start turning the pager or ask, go and ask them if you wanna walk up your, your pager. That may be an option. I hate to go outside of this, I said we're having a million-dollar radio system, we need to, you know, use it.
Right, right.
Exactly.
The key, the key is time to respond.
Yeah, cutting down the steps that they're having to do.
Few weeks ago when all this.
Twenty-minute wait for a text to go out. I mean, we need something more reliable and I think we need to make our system, our Motorola system.
And the problem is, we can't, it's like Rusty's explaining, we can't control how fast that that text message shows out regardless of which system we use.
Yeah, once it leaves the county, that's it.
So basically, the only thing we're doing is putting them out, having to carry it with them inside somewhere.
I think you'll be surprised, I think most of them are gonna carry it, if I'm not mistaken. You can make the radio if you're sitting in church. You cut the radio off, only way it's gonna go off is if the pager comes to you, it'll activate. So yet it can go off in church, but I don't think you're gonna have, how many would you just estimate, Bob? Half?
I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm like Daniel, you're gonna have a number of them and, and it's gonna be restricted to, you know, where they work, whether they can carry a pager around too, or, or a radio around. You know, there's gonna be different functionalities and, and the more they're carrying it, the more it's gonna get tore up. And that's, you know, then they're gonna come, and.
Lost.
So it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a cost either way. I'm gonna tell you whether they carry the pager or whether they carry the radio. They start carrying the radio, they're gonna tear them up. There's also gonna be a number that's not gonna carry it. So like you said, is there gonna be a Happy Migs out there that we can find? Possibly, but there's gonna be a cost regardless either way we go, whatever this board decides.
Few weeks ago, few weeks ago, when, when all this, some of this went down and, and you, I, I called you about it. Was, what, which one were they using then? The phone pager or the pager?
These are all three.
Huh?
These are all three.
No, no, which one, they were able to use, they were able to get something through one, but not the other?
The other day, they were able to get the text, they were getting the text, and the pages on the radio.
Okay, but the, the little pager itself was not, okay, okay, I knew it was, I couldn't remember which one it was, yeah.
Well, I know the last meeting I went to, there was no consistency at all. They, they couldn't reproduce the problems they were having, so, I mean-
It's not with Motorola. But this is not a- No, this isn't a Motorola, this isn't direct source Motorola. If I can explain, Mr. Bishop.
Can we let these guys, and maybe Daniel? I mean, we can sit here and do this for a long time, y'all come up with the best solution, and, and thinking of economics, and then let's-
I think that's what they're saying. I, I think they're trying to tell us, say, hey, we're fixing to use our radio systems we just bought, and scratch everything else.
Now, we're getting a camera on the radio system, it's more reliable than anything.
So don't buy any other pagers, or any other, nothing.
Let's give it a shot, and see what, give it six months, and see where we are money-wise, and-
But, I mean, at the same time, we were saying we're gonna tear the radios up.
I just wanted y'all to be aware, that there's a least pushback.
Yeah, you're gonna find there's volunteers, whatever. But before we kind of totally do it, can I suggest that we kind of give them, maybe a week before we do it, say, in a week, we're no longer gonna be using these other two ways of communicating.
Hey, Bob, let, let-
But don't go away your page-
Let me, let me ask this question. Are you sure that every single volunteer on the department that has one of those, uh, Alpha pagers, has a portable radio?
They're supposed to, every member-
Are you sure?
Every member of every department.
Because some will even purchase their own.
Yeah, I'm just worried, I'm just worried about we, we leave out a volunteer, somebody doesn't have the stuff.
Brian, is that something you?
I would have to check, grab another more about that. The roster that was submitted before the purchase of the radio, listed every member of that fire department, and that's how those radios were allocated to every department. Was based on the number of members that that department had. So every member should have been issued a radio.
So the only, so the only way a volunteer firefighter's gonna get a pager, he's gotta have his portable radio with him?
Yes, or, well, right now, no.
No, no, I'm talking about, under this new plan, is the only way a volunteer's gonna be able to get communication is his portable radio.
If that is a decision of the board, if that's a decision of the board, the only way that they're gonna get that message, like you're saying, is if they have that portable radio on.
Would it help? I disagree with that.
Would it help if we look into those pagers that'll work with our system?
Yeah, multiple, I mean, yeah.
Time to come up, hands off, Daniel. You're a volunteer firefighter, and, and for me, and a youth county, do I need to come forward?
Yes, sir, please.
Just something to put into your thought process. Name and number and all that stuff?
Yeah, name, rank, two, number, fifth.
Uh, what I was gonna suggest to y'all, particularly having to have done this a few times. Uh, my wife left the bedroom. If you're listening to a radio all night, every night, gentlemen, that won't work. Uh, it, it works for about six months, and then your wife starts screaming, turn that off, or the husband's gonna start screaming, turn that off. You need a viable way to, uh, as you said, they're volunteers, and with that, uh, if you'd like to know what it costs for a municipal department, and we're gonna fund that many folks, that's expensive. So whatever the radio system is, is probably a much, uh, less expensive alternative. Just food for thought.
What we're talking about doing right now?
Right.
Okay.
Sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
I think there may be some misunderstanding on how the actual radio works. Yes, there's some communes are carrying the radio. However, monitoring the radio all night's not necessary. You take this radio that's programmed to say Monterey Fire Department. We're gonna mute that radio, and you can stick it in the charger. It's over there, you're not hearing anything from it. When we send down the tones from the sheriff's department, that there's now been a call, and you need to activate, press that button.
I think he was speaking as an advocate of it, not, not-
Well, I didn't know if you guys fully understood that, I wanna make sure that everyone understood that.
My suggestion, is we do go this route, is tell them not to get rid of the pagers, to hang on to them, 'cause if we turn around and come back to this system, if it turns out it's not working effectively.
I just wanted y'all to be aware, and I would be glad to work with Rusty and give y'all several options. But there's no option that exists without a redundant system that, that's not gonna cost money. Even if you, it's like Daniel, you know, alluded to.
Only now, just give them a little time before you tell them we come off.
Well, I hate to, um, beat them.
Well, they know they're off now.
Well, they know they're done.
Well, no, not done. The system's not working.
We know the system's not working now.
Oh, well, no.
Never mind.
Forget it. All right, next item.
Can I say one more thing before we go? And I'd like to throw this out for a big fight ensues with the, uh, upcoming event of us dispersing the, uh, mosquito control products out to the municipalities. I would like to either have a lottery, or we could do it alphabetically, numerically, however you want to. To surplus-
I think I can sell it. Can we sell it?
Hey.
I hate that.
Somebody asked me one thing. Where are we, where are we on the radio? Where are we on the radios?
Can you give me a quadrant?
We just moved on, what did we decide on the radio pager, etc.?
They're using the radios.
Just use radios. I just had now anywhere, so I've been working a week now.
I'm coming up with a recommendation.
Yeah, and, and again, I, I would strongly encourage that we find some other means, in addition to that radio, to give somebody an option, uh, because I, I think, I think-
If I had to carry that radio in my, in my line of work, I couldn't do it.
Well, and I'm the same. The reservoir fire department, for example, gets the tones out, radio the same way, and we get texts on our phones the same way. I get them, I got eight last month. So my, my point is, there's a, there's another system out there that the reservoir's using, that's working very well, getting the, the text, a second form of communication of. I'm worried about, very much, on just having portable radios for the volunteer fire. I don't think that's enough.
Well, I'm worried about, we spent $300,000 last year, and it's down to two.
That's what I suggest as well. Check on the Motorola pagers that are working, the radio system.
Okay, all right, we'll do that too. Check on that. Leave it like it is, and let them check on that.
That digital pager, the tone, similar before, we said, normal. We need something small.
Next item, Laura.
This won't take, and you don't have to take action on this, most of it is actually on the agenda for Monday. What I need to know is about our hazardous waste day. We did not get the funds last year, so we did not have a hazardous waste collection. I don't have the funds in hand yet, but I have been told from DEQ that we will, I've applied for them, and that they're, they've got low manpower, but we will be getting the money. But we will be getting around $75,000 from DEQ. Because we didn't have one last year, and what's gonna be stockpiled, it could cost us 125, or maybe even 150 this year, because last year, year before last, it was 100,000, and I had 75 of it. So it could cost us 125, 135, for the materials we have that have to be hauled off. So I need to know, is this something y'all wanna do this year? We'll have to eat the difference.
Yes.
Okay. Then it'll be on Monday's agenda, we don't have to take-
Or either we just quit hauling them off altogether. I mean, that's the only other choice, right?
Well, if we don't-
That subdivision of yours. Let's just put it on there for Monday.
It'll, it's on there, it's on there for Monday.
Okay, all right.
That's all I have, that, that pertains to me.
All right. Now, you got another item about discussion prior to these funds.
Don't, don't start my items, sir.
You want me to bring you up to date?
Yeah.
Waiting on MDOT. John has told us, they don't like to have two, the major highway this close together, two big projects shut down, in case they've got divert traffic off the interstate. So as soon as this one gets wrapped up, they're gonna, they're going to bid, hopefully in April or May, with that one, and they'll start construction immediately. Just as soon as, uh, the downtown interchange gets, uh, completed, and that is anticipated no later than June. So it's, it's waiting on MDOT, and that's been the whole problem.
My question is this. I voted for it. And the reason why I voted for it, everybody said everything, every time, I always voted against Brandon. Any day come up, is against Brandon. So I voted for the one thing I probably never should have. But I wanna ask, why is MNOT, why did MDOT not choose to replace this bridge?
And they have, the mayor could send you a picture of ten engineers sitting there looking at that bridge, in time between the water underneath it, and the bridge that, that they're going with. You don't even ask the question, didn't even ask the question. That, that's a whole different hierarchy over there, and how they approach things, stuff like it. The first recommendation was to keep the bridge, you know, and just work off of it. But then they said, no, it has to go away, because, you know, they have to put a new bridge there.
Because of?
Man, that's an engineer. I mean, you, you go talk to, go, go, give me a call.
Well, I mean, I know they replaced bridges from here to Morton, you know, but yeah.
Structurally, yeah, structurally it's not, but you're adding another lane to this bridge.
Okay.
And they, we're creating three lanes. We're gonna have a three lane, gonna be a turn lane in the middle, we'll have a red light up there at the Trickle and Bridge Road, uh, interchange, new red light at Lewis Wilson Interchange. But the big push was, with the Trickle and Bridge Road, to give a turn lane, so it helps alleviate that traffic. And it goes back to a two lane.
Bob, it is a car turn lane, not a bicycle lane.
That's right, it's a car turn lane, no bicycles are allowed. But that's the whole crux of, of, of that improvement project. NPO given, allocated $300,000 to lighten, like, uh, interchange, I mean, the red lights, way back when. And then the mayor took it from there, you know, came to you all for the board, for the bridge replacement. You know, the, the city had their skin, and then we had a little bit of money left over, and MDOT was able to come up with a little bit of money to finish out the project.
So there's not gonna be any walk path, bike pass along?
I won't swear to it, but I'm not aware.
Was, uh, you, did you hear that Steve? You wasn't listening.
I was listening.
I have an out, the, the argument-
Anyway, though.
At the beginning, when it came in here, we didn't quite hear it all like that. And they didn't have enough money to make up for that, for the bridge. They needed more money to make up, MDOT wasn't gonna put out anymore. But my, you know, I voted against it first time, mainly because we don't do, that's a state aid bridge. That's 80 Highway, just like the ones in, going to Pele Hachi, that's 80 Highway. So that was my, it wasn't, it wasn't anything to a Brandon, it was just that we just don't, we didn't, need to get into these state aid bridges like that. And we don't do them, and, uh, uh, sure, the state would love us to keep any up money for that. So that was, that's the reason I was against it then, and I'm against it now.
You're welcome to maintain that position, but y'all voted for it, now if y'all want some reconsideration, well, you better, yeah, before-
But that was, I'm just explaining to you why I didn't.
Well, I understood, okay, that's fine, I got a problem with that, I respect that, I mean, you know.
I'm not, I'm not an advocate to, I'm just saying why I voted against it, and I just didn't think we should start, we never have done it, and that was the reason I didn't.
Well, they gonna get a permit.
Like it was. They could go back, like others, go back and try to get funding, or get funding to finish it. But I'm just telling you why, I'm gonna explain to you why I didn't support it last time.
Yeah, bro, I respect that.
Well, what got me started on this was that whole deal with, with Butch, you know? After we've already had our pre-bid conference, then he sent a text saying that he has issues with it, and wants us to go to the admin department, and he's got some concerns, and-
You keep this, you know, you just keep going to the point where you just don't really care about what the folks of Brandon think. You know, I live in the city of Brandon. I want to know what kind of fence you're gonna put up. As a citizen of Brandon, and I'd like the mayor, I, I, I'd like the mayor and an alderman to represent me in their decisions. They have that opportunity to do so. If we're gonna make improvements to where, especially if those ball fields get built, and that, we're gonna have a lot more traffic going down there, and we're gonna have a nice looking fence, we hope. But we wanna make sure that we're okay with what's going in there, and that's, I think that's due respect the county needs to give the city.
Absolutely, and he had that due respect, and he knew we had already advertised the project. And he knew the day before that he had already sent Kyle Brown down to the pre-bid conference. So the day after that, it didn't the time to say, hey, we're not gonna contribute any longer.
Well, no, I think you misunderstood, if you look at, at the text, he could've done a little bit better job of clarification. He made the comment, are we still committed on the three sides, because that has not been brought up for discussion.
Yeah, he and I had, took a conversation two days before that.
And it, and we traded emails on the, on the, what's in the recorded minutes of the city, and then what the, the recordings of the e, e-minutes here in the county. I think we're all on board, Jared and I sat down with him last Friday, and Craig was there, we all, we're good to go. I mean, you know, so I mean, those are apples and oranges. I mean, these are, it's backpointed, this is apples and oranges. Fencing and the bridge are two different issues. If you're gonna try to tie them together, that's much BS.
No, to me, they're, they're together, to me, because of Butch.
Well, if you don't like Butch, that's your problem.
What?
I mean, I mean, it is.
Well, no, I don't like the way Butch handled the situation with the text and email, after the fact, saying that-
With the rest of the fence.
Saying that, you know, we're not-
Question mark. Question mark, and now, now the statement, now the statement, just a question mark.
But why do it at all? Why not pick up the phone and call?
Did you have, why, why don't you pick up the phone and call him back?
I did call him two days before that, and had a conversation with him, and he said, hey, we got one spot, we need to move over, so we can both bush hog on each side. I said, man, we can make that happen, no problem.
Why were you even having this conversation?
I, I think it's because Butch has got a hard on, because of Brian.
Holy smoke! And then that recording sign back there means nothing?
Well.
I mean, that's, you know, port a form, you know, uh-
Oh, somebody called out him, so she's-
No, I mean, Brian was willing to accommodate the, the city and the board, and, you know, and that's appreciated. And the same thing with the fence. Out of respect for the people that live in this city, we'd like to know what the county's gonna do, you know? You got, you're doing a pipe out there for the, the fence, you got 100 feet of it on the city right away, you know? Uh, not all of us on county land.
What are you talking about?
The pipe that, that Dale's putting in out there for the multi-purpose, so do you know that the city doesn't allow that kind of pipe in, happened for the last two years? For drainage?
Nope.
Nope, nope, 'cause we don't bother to call and contact the city.
Pull the pipe up and let the water run down the road.
Yeah. Let's move on, I'm obviously part of the discussion.
Well, uh, it's on our, it's on our, my, my question is, on the bridge?
On the bridge.
Is it functional? Does MDOT need to replace it or not?
I have no idea.
I guess we'd never have heard whether the bridge was, uh, structurally, uh, needed to be replaced, or the reason for it to replace. We'd, we'd have not heard.
It has to be modified, for you to add a third lane to it.
Yeah, I mean, and, and I don't think, I don't know that it was broad, I can't remember back.
That, I mean, that's not, that has not changed, that has not changed the, when Butch came in here, he said there's gonna be a three lane from Lewis Wilson all the way up to Trickle and Bridge Road. You know, we'll put red lights at both intersections, and so the, the contention got back to the highway department about what to do with the bridge, either add to it, or replace it outright. You know, because it had the plan back when it was built in 1940, they liked it, but that's an engineer's discussion. And if y'all want to go talk to Dick and, and Melissa McGrath, I'm about to, man, march on. But if, you know, if you wanna do something, do it, but I don't see the point. I mean, it's an opportunity to put some money back into the city of Brandon, you know, from a project standpoint. Can't even tell you the last time money got sent, and we touch on how much we spent on West Rankin Parkway here in a minute, two and a half million, 2.7 million. You know, a lot of things we're doing for the various areas around here. Appreciate, you know, Jared's comment about Highway 80, but that's a city street too, I mean, you know.
And the 4.5 million we spent on East Metro, which is helping Brandon.
That's right.
So, I mean, I mean, we do our fair share, it helps everybody.
Absolutely, absolutely.
East Rankin, uh, East Metro. See, doesn't that come across? Your tire, hip and pride.
That's what I said, yeah.
Four and a half million came from the state, though.
No, no, four and a half million came from Rankin County.
Which one, on which part?
4.5 million dollars of it.
I mean, I know they got the last part of four and a half million.
They, they billed us, they billed us as our part went along. They sent us a check, they sent us an invoice, we paid it as we went along.
Well, good for you. Or we're waiting to build on now?
I can't, I'm ready to vote this damn bridge down tomorrow, so.
If you wanna put, if you wanna put out there for action, get prepared for room for the function, Brandon.
Okay, all right, well, it's on our agenda for Monday.
Bob, those people only vote for me and you, I don't think they care about Jay.
All right, do we have any others?
Yeah, you got, you got the next one right here.
Where are we on the Flowood grant? Craig, did it die at the end, or has it stayed alive and well?
It's, it's in COET, it's sitting there unacted upon, because there are contingencies to that agreement.
But is this board bound to that agreement?
Not bound, not bound, so, uh, the prior board cannot, uh, delegate this board to an agreement that is not, that has not been acted upon.
I guess I missed something. What are you talking about?
Well, she didn't go into great detail, but related to Flowood, I had to add that the grant that we gave, the board gave to Flowood for the convention center.
Oh, for the convention center, oh, oh. No, I can tell you that, that the legal answer is, this board is not bound by what the previous board did.
So is that agreeing, I mean, I know that, I know convention centers, it's just still kinda looming out there, I mean, do we need to, are we, I mean, is it gonna come back to us and say?
Yeah, it has to come back, I feel sure, Bob.
I mean, I assume, even, even if they hit all these contingencies, are we bound? I mean, if they able to pull their deal together, I mean, they still have to come back to us to get us to brown off on it?
But this board will only be bound to the extent that it wishes to be bound to that agreement.
That's what I'm gonna do. The, the, this board cannot act.
Bob, so it's clear, this board cannot act on the agreement.
Cause there is no legal act going.
Bob has made herself clear.
I'm good.
All right. So do we have anything else?[1729.81] You good? All right. Don't say, say your session. Okay.
We gotta come back.
We gotta come back a little bit anyway. Real quick.
I've got it.
All right, I guess we recess till what time? 1:30.
1:45.
I thought it was 1:00.
No, come on.
I thought it was 1:30.
Now, remind y'all that it's free lock outside, there's right on I-20 and kind of 80 is back and back.
Oh, my God. My God, an 85-year-old man waiting on me daylights. He's been waiting an hour. And he was your brother, I mean, your ex-father-in-law.
What time do we really... What time? Is it one o'clock? How many people do we have coming? Hey, how many people do we have coming? Two. Two? And the first one's supposed to be here at one, and the second one is? 1:30, okay. I just didn't let them come on. All right. Three? We have three? All right, okay.
Whenever y'all wanna come back in, Julie.
All right, okay.
We need to recess until 1:00 if y'all wanna try to get...
I was gonna say, I think you're gonna get chips.
I would be checking the line, I had that shirt wrapped up around the side of my pocket.
All right, I make, I make the motion we recess till 1:00 o'clock. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye's having.
Go to Subway.
This was like two hours longer than yesterday.
Somebody's going to get chips here.